Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for January 31st. It's the middle of winter, it's snowing out, or it was snowing out when I came in. So, some announcements. This Saturday at the Brookline High School Martin Luther King Room between 1:00 and 3:00 o'clock is a Brookline Pan-Asian Lunar New Year Celebration. It looks like it's going to be a lot of fun. It's free, and it's at the high school, the Martin Luther King Room. And I think it's posted on our website.
Yes.
Any other announcements?
I have an announcement about an event that's on February 15th, so just about two weeks away, but want to get the word out. This is an event sponsored by the Office of Diversity Inclusion Community Relations, and it's a salary negotiation workshop for women. It's February 15th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the Denny Room at the Health Department. That's 11 Pierce Street. So, done in collaboration with the American Association of University Women in the City of Boston, and again sponsored by our Diversity Inclusion and Community Relations Department.
Okay. Any other announcements, Selectmen Green? Are you good?
Am I supposed to have one?
No. Okay. Public comment? Anyone here for public comment? Okay. Stay. Three minutes?
Yeah, two minutes.
Okay, even better.
Okay, so Mike Stanley, I was before, here before, and we were doing the solar-powered flying pods, so you might have read some more about them. And so what we're doing is, we have a proposal for Brookline. I had gone to the Transportation, tried to work with them, didn't get anywhere with that way because they're sort of working at different levels. So, what I'm proposing is something that is a revenue generator for Brookline. So, we would be paying 5% of gross revenue. These are electric autonomous vehicles, but they don't use the rights of way. So, we have a mass release agreement similar to the Google Fiber model that we can bring convenient mass transit to Brookline that has less impact than your cars and other vehicles. So, I would ask, you know, either to talk to, to have something come that says, "Look, let me talk, find somebody in the Economic Development or the Climate Committee." I would encourage Brookline to bring this to the town meeting. There's obviously lots of interest in both solar power, you know, energy efficiency and other things. It seems like it would be a very strong connection with Brookline, and I'm local, this is the closest town. We need to make sure that this is amenable to towns, and that's what I'd like to do.
Okay, why don't you give your contact info to Kate, and we'll get back to you and see who you should talk to.
Thank you.
Okay. Some routine stuff, minutes. We have a bunch of minutes of past meetings that we need to approve. A joint meeting with the school committee on January 5th, and our meeting with January 10th and 24th. Anyone have any amendments, I believe?
I sent a few corrections around, yeah.
Okay. Do you have any minutes?
I do.
Okay, so just get them over to Kate. So, I'll move that we accept the minutes for the joint meeting of January 5th, and then the meetings of the 10th and the 24th, as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have a question of approving and executing the fiscal year 2017 survey and planning grant application to the Mass Historical Commission Survey and Planning Grant Program.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Allison Steinfeld, Planning Director. The Planning Department is requesting your authorization to apply for a $20,000 grant from Mass Historic in order to conduct and update our existing survey of the cultural and architectural resources within Aspen Wall Hill. This would be a $20,000 grant matched with $20,000 worth of in-kind staff resources by the preservation planners.
Okay, any questions, comments? Therefore, seeing none, I'll move that we approve and execute the FY 2017 Survey and Planning Grant Application to the Mass Historical Commission Survey and Planning Grant Program to conduct the first phase of a multi-phase survey update of cultural and architectural resources in the greater Aspen Wall Hill area of Brookline. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. And we have four temporary wine and malt beverage license, and I'll move them in omnibus fashion. I reviewed all the applications, they appear to be in order. Police Department has weighed in, doesn't have any objections. So, I'll move that we grant to Brookline Youth Hockey for a Brookline Youth Hockey fundraiser to be held on Saturday, February 4th, 2017, from 8:00 to 11:00 at the 40 Aspen Wall Avenue Teen Center. This is a temporary wine and malt alcohol beverage license, all these are. That's number one. Number two is to Vine Ripe Grill for a birthday party to be held on Saturday, February 4th from 7:00 to 11:00 at 1281 West Roxbury Parkway. Another one to Vine Ripe Grill for a meeting, 20th Century Fund to be held on Tuesday, February 7th from 5:00 to 11:00, 5:00 to 8:00, at 1281 Roxbury, West Roxbury Parkway. And to the Chamber of Commerce for a Chamber of Commerce fundraising event to be held on Thursday, February 9th, from 5:30 to 8:30 at 40 Aspen Wall. And that's the Teen Center. All those, and some of them, I thought I saw the police, but we have an asterisk. For any, any that don't have police approval, this will be pending police approval. So, all those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. And last item on our miscellaneous calendar is authorize, a question of authorizing the Chair to execute a letter of invitation to Representative Joseph Kennedy, inviting him to speak at a special ceremony honoring three enslaved Brookline soldiers who fought at the Battle of Lexington. And this is going to be a very interesting program on Tuesday, April 25th, and we're hoping, and it's going to be sponsored by the Selectmen, the Veteran Services Department, the Office of Diversity Inclusion and Community Relations, and Hidden Brook, Hidden Brookline Committee. So, looks very interesting.
It's Tuesday.
Is it a Tuesday?
Tuesday morning.
Yes. Morning, yeah, 10:00 a.m. So, I'll move that we authorize the Chair that we execute this letter, inviting Representative Kennedy to speak at a special ceremony honoring three enslaved Brookline soldiers who fought at the Battle of Lexington. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Daley?
Aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Okay, moving on to our main calendar. First item was added, I think, today, and it's, it's in response to some of the events that have been happening this weekend. And I was especially troubled last night with the firing of the Acting Attorney General. And what's going on in Washington with the immigration order that was issued on Friday, to me, is very, very troubling. And I think a lot of people in Brookline are troubled, and as indicated by the demonstration that really was rather organically just popped up on Saturday. Brookline has twice voted, Brookline Town Meeting has twice voted to be designated a sanctuary city. Once was in 1985, and the other was reaffirmed in 2006. And I think there's, there's been a lot of confusion about what does that mean? And we had a discussion, I think it was two weeks ago, three weeks ago, asking our Diversity and Inclusion Commission, Diversity Inclusion and Community Relations Commission, to help us look at police department policies. We had the police chief in here on the 5th telling us what the police department policies were, and they were similar in many ways to what Boston's doing, with some differences. And I think we needed some help examining those, and the Diversity Inclusion and Community Relations Commission is helping us with that, and I believe they're, they're meeting on Monday to consider it. So, I was thinking that the Board of Selectmen should issue a statement of policy, and we should, we should consider issuing a statement of policy. And I asked Town Administrator Klechner to do a draft, and Selectmen Green has done another draft, and let's, I think we should have a little discussion on what our approach is, and whether we're prepared to, today, vote a statement, or it needs a little more work. So, I don't know how we want to do this. One of the, the issues we have is pursuant, pursuant to the open meeting law, we can't really discuss this amongst ourselves, other than in an open meeting, so hence, we're having this discussion really for the first time in public. We have not really, we have not discussed this amongst ourselves. So, we have two potential approaches. The first one is, now, I'll read it. "The town of Brookline has been designated a sanctuary city since 1985, when Town Meeting enacted a resolution declaring itself a sanctuary for refugees from El Salvador, Guatemala, and Haiti. In 2006, the Town Meeting reaffirmed its sanctuary status by passing a new resolution extending sanctuary to all undocumented immigrants from all countries of the world. Most recently, in response to the federal government's initiative to enforce immigration status, the Board of Selectmen reviewed the police department's policies in complying with the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Priority Enforcement Program. The Board directed its Commission on Diversity Inclusion and Community Relations to review the current policy and make recommendations on any changes to modify or strengthen it. Meanwhile, the Board of Selectmen of the town of Brookline will continue to support and promote the safety, health, and well-being of all residents regardless of immigration status. Today, the town of Brookline remains as committed to all our residents as we've been since we first became a sanctuary city 31 years ago." So, that's, that's one approach. The other approach is, is something that's perhaps a little longer, and, but I think a little more affirmative. So, this is, this was Selectmen Green's suggestion.
You want me to start somewhere?
Yes, sure.
Yeah, my approach is to get away from the fixation on the word or the term sanctuary city. I mean, it's, it's a confusing term, and to some degree, I think, it's playing, it could be playing into the hands of policies coming down from the federal government that really target people who use the bad word sanctuary city. Rather, I think we need to focus on the substance of, you know, what, what people are trying to get at with the use of that term. So, you know, what I suggest is that we, you know, start off by, you know, saying that we're affirming our guiding moral principles as it relates to people who have been targeted by the President's executive order, while we along with the rest of the world are still trying to understand what the Trump Administration's unprecedented actions mean. So, start off with, you know, what we're concerned about are our principles, our principles of openness, providing safety and sanctuary and safe haven to people, to strangers. I mean, I'm not a religious person, but, you know, there are religious texts. I talked about, welcome the stranger, all right, because we were once strangers ourselves. And I think that's really important concept that's really behind this. And then, I talked about recent developments in terms of how the proposals are, number one, violation of laws and constitution of the United States. I mean, our laws, right, federal laws include treaties that we have entered into. Those are our laws, so that, and those laws include treaties with respect to treatment of refugees and immigrants, in a very broad sense. So, you know, I think, you know, I'm not an international legal scholar, but I think that, you know, the, the executive orders violate those treaties and therefore violate our laws, and clearly violate the Constitution in terms of a number of issues. Most particularly relevant to us is the principle that the federal government, because of the 10th Amendment, which says that, you know, all power is not given to the federal government, resides in the states, cannot commandeer, as it's called, you know, local police departments to do their work. And that's exactly what, you know, one of the issues with respect to, you know, providing sanctuary to immigrants and others is. So, you know, I, to talk about, that's what, you know, the administration is threatening to do. And then talk about our response. And in my view, our response should be threefold. Number one, things that we need to do with respect to the policies and procedures of the police to address issues where we are, the federal government's trying to force the police to do their work with respect to capturing and turning in undocumented immigrants. And that is, you know, what we have asked the Diversity Inclusion and Community Relations Committee to look at and come up with some proposals. But secondly, I think we have to, you know, view this in terms of, you know, the town, you know, being open to providing services, both, you know, health services to the Health Department, mental health services, trauma services, to people who are coming here, you know, either as undocumented alien or undocumented immigrants, or as refugees. You know, the town should be open and welcoming and offering assistance to these people. And that's sanctuary, and that's the substance of sanctuary. And thirdly, you know, we're requesting Brookline civil society, the churches, political organizations, the service organizations, you know, individuals, nonprofits, educational institutions, civil society in Brookline to also join this effort. It's not just the town being a sanctuary city, it's the community that has to provide this sanctuary. And that is in terms of, you know, providing, reaching out to people and, and providing, you know, whether it's shelter, food, support, and, you know, other things to integrate people who are here either as immigrants or as refugees into our community. And I guess the final thing that I'd suggest, you know, be part of the statement, that we gear up to carrying out both affirmative legal strategies and defensive legal measures that we'll have to be, that we will be facing in the next, at least, four years. Because I think, you know, it's, it's not just enough to say we're going to build a sanctuary city, we have to really be ready to defend the substance of that legally, as well as otherwise. So, that's, that's my approach. And I think Selectmen Franco has some suggested edits to the statement I did, which I think are proper.
I do have some suggested edits. I think to further clarify what we're doing, one of the problems that I think we're experiencing out of Washington now is a lack of clarity about what exactly is going on. There's a lot of questions, especially over the weekend, only some of which are being answered over the past couple of days. But before we get into the specifics, I want to compliment both the Chair and Selectmen Green for, for spurring this to occur. I think all of us on the board are deeply concerned about what, what the Trump Administration has recently said, and the changes they've made to immigration policy. And as Selectmen Green said, we on the board, I think, with the rest of the world, are still trying to figure out exactly what's going on and what it all means. But I sit here proudly asserting, reaffirming that Brookline is a sanctuary city, and that we're a welcoming place for everybody regardless of immigration status, and we want to be a place where people can live, work, and raise a family without fear of being disrupted unnecessarily.
I like Bernard's version, the longer version, no offense, Mel.
Taken.
I would like to add one other thing that I think, we, you know, particularly since we're so close to universities and the medical center, I think we have a lot of people who live in Brookline that might be here on lawful green cards and lawful visas. And I would just like to mention, I mean, at this time, they're not asking the cities and towns to track visa holders down, but I would like to mention something about, you know, they might at some future date. And so, I'd like to mention, you know, that, that our support for people who are here on lawful green cards and visas, and that they should not be discriminated against because of their religion or ethnic heritage or something like that.
See, but we're saying in here concerning safe sanctuary in Brookline for immigrants and refugees from all countries regardless of their immigration status. So, do we need to go that?
Well, I mean, I think that the sanctuary city concept tends to be focused around undocumented.
Yeah.
Well, but this is, this administration is-
Maybe you could say undocumented or documented.
Yeah, this administration is going much farther than undocumented. I mean, to, we have many, you know, I've heard about somebody who was supposed to come, I don't know whether they were going to live in Brookline, but they were going to be over at Harvard Medical School doing some important research, and because they're from Iran, they're being denied entry into the country, and, you know, so I just would like to, I'd like to include something about-
I agree. I think that the sense, what you're expressing is the fact that, you know, we don't know what's coming down the pike from this administration, but we can guess that it's going to be broader than just so-called undocumented aliens. I mean, already with the current executive order, green card holders who are en route have been stopped, including Iraqi translators who put their lives on the line for the United States in Iraq, translating for soldiers. And you are stopped, I mean, this is an outrage. So, we can expect all kinds of things coming down the road, and I think that, you know, you know, people holding green cards or otherwise viewed as alien, and alien, quote-unquote, by the current administration should be, need our protection because they will be targeted too.
So, one of the things, what about the green version of this statement? I hope Selectmen Green is willing to embrace my characterization.
Selectmen Green version.
Selectmen Green version, is that it, it ends with some declarative policy decisions, rather than just sort of being a statement about our feelings, and, and I would submit that we can wordsmith this forever, and keep adding, adding different groups of people and strengthening the language. I think the great thing about the, the version that we have in front of us is, it actually proposes to do something, and I don't want us to lose sight of, of those affirmative actions that we're, we're contemplating taking.
So, I was frankly kind of hoping that we would be able to vote something tonight, and, yeah, I have, I have a little wordsmithing, and you have a little wordsmithing, so I'm-
I would like to write a few sentences on my point.
Right, so I'm thinking, we have a sense of the board that we're going in the right direction, we're indicating that to the community, and let's, let's bring this back for a vote next week.
I would imagine there's likely to be another resolution at town meeting, correct?
Well, the town meeting is five months away, so I'd like to do something.
Yeah, no, I think we should do something now, I have no problem with that.
And this, and hopefully, this would, this could even make that moot, perhaps, maybe not. But I, I'd like to go on record with an affirmative statement of policy, and I, and we're going to be helped by the, what the Diversity and Inclusion and Community Relations Commission is doing with the police department will, will inform us.
But I think it's fair to say that this board is, is reaffirming our status as a sanctuary city, and that we're supportive of the health, the safety, the well-being of Brookline residents regardless of their immigration status. And we'll figure out the more specifics of, of the policy direction in the statement over the next week, but that's my sense of the board.
Right, that's my sense.
I, I think we should mention, and I had asked for this information earlier today, because the Trump Administration is threatening retaliations against cities and towns that are sanctuary cities, and maybe, Mel, you can go through the numbers for us of what might be at stake.
Sure, the town receives approximately four and a half million in direct federal aid, about 3.1 million of that is education-related funding, and we also receive 1.4 million in Community Development Block Grant Program, and that's directly from the federal government. If you include in that definition of federal aid, money that comes from the federal government and passes through the state agencies, then we're up to 6.4 million dollars.
So, I just want to say, I mean, I think it's important that we reaffirm our designation as a sanctuary city, but people should know, I mean, I think we should be asking for a small override if, because this is, this is like, I know you're, you're laughing, but this is critical, I know, I'm very familiar with the Community Development Block Grant money, and that money is super important for our housing authority buildings, for our senior center programs, for-
Most disadvantaged citizens.
Yeah, Brookline Community Mental Health. But this is, this would be like devastating for those organizations if they lost that. The education funding, we all, we're all very aware of, you know, how tight the school budget has been due to their increasing enrollment, so, you know, I, I support us being a sanctuary city, I think the town of Brookline supports that, but, you know, if we should have this money cut off, we're going to have to find some other way to find some monies for that. So, I would expect people to be supportive if we have to replace that money somehow.
Okay. I'll note that San Francisco's filed a lawsuit on that very issue, and I think that, you know, as we go down the road, we should, you know, with other cities and towns in Massachusetts and maybe across the country, you know, be involved with litigation.
I believe our Attorney General is looking into that, the other Attorneys General, so
So, I think we need to move on, we have a lot of business tonight, and that was a late insertion into the calendar, so thank you for bearing with us, but I think it was important and timely that we have this discussion.
I want to thank both Mel and Bernard for working on that.
We have a few board and commission interviews, and the first is Planning Board, Mr. Mount Joy, come join the party. Tell us about yourself.
Good evening. Well, I think I wrote in my personal statement, my professional CV, being a planner, an urban designer, architect, I've lived, in addition, I might add that I've lived in Brookline for 20 years. Began in Pill Hill, and then moved over to Coolidge Corner, to actually Packard's Corner, right by Clearflower Bakery where I've been for the last 15 years. So, in my-
You're so thin.
In my line of work- In my line of work, I do work with a lot of cities around the country, planning boards, et cetera, as a consultant. I have not, my activities with the city of Brookline have consisted of one-
Town.
Pardon me. I guess I'm already disqualified. The town of Brookline is, I worked on one of their design review, ad hoc design reviews up in Chestnut Hill at one point as a volunteer. That consists my city experience, town experience in Brookline, pardon me.
So tell us about your approach and your philosophy and what you'd bring to the Planning Board.
Well, I guess, you know, anybody practicing in the field of urban design and planning these days realizes that cities are faced with a variety of issues. I think there's a 40B coming up in the next few minutes that is probably a big issue for the city. Many cities are dealing with affordable housing, and I think that Brookline's no exception to that. I'm also an avid cyclist. I commute to bike, on my bike every day, so I'm one of them as well. Perhaps not as strident as many. I try to be a little bit more even. Prior to, one of my professional careers was working with the Metropolitan District Commission before, so I have a deep love for open space and parks and in particular connectivity of those open spaces and parks to resources. Obviously, Brookline is blessed with much open space and greenery, so we're not as deprived as other communities, but it certainly can always stand improving. Resiliency, sustainability, preparedness are all issues that many cities, I'm working on one with the city of Cambridge right now.
Yeah, their city.
Their fair city. On a preparedness plan, they have many low-lying areas and sort of weather issues and climate uncertainty is, certain communities are at risk or threatened. And so that's an issue that seems to me to be more in the fore as we move forward in this era. So those are my sort of areas, not surprising, of course, in the profession.
Sure. The Planning Board is one of our more demanding boards, and there's a significant time commitment. Think you can handle that?
Well, I do, I must admit, I do travel a fair bit for work. We do, I do work around the country, so I would, I know it's a regular schedule, so I would make it happen.
Mostly Thursday evenings and some mornings.
I think they have Wednesday morning or something for sign review.
So as a, I'm willing to make the commitment if you're willing to have me. Sure.
Yeah. So I noticed that among your interests are affordable housing and transit-oriented development as well as open space. We sort of have a bit of a tension in town of people feeling like some of the affordable housing projects, particularly in the Coolidge Corner area, that there is too much density all in one location and that it's, for those of us who do drive, it's going to make it almost, you know, impossible to get through Coolidge Corner. And so I'm just wondering what, where you stand on some of those issues.
Is this a litmus test? I think a lot of the work we do around the country deals with these issues. And of course, density has come to be, come to be a bit of a bad word in some communities. I think in a place like Boston or Brookline with a, what I would call a relatively mature transit system, I think density is less of a traffic generator than it is a economic generator personally. I think that density is probably a good thing in the middle of places that have good access to transit. I would say that height-
Okay, we just heard from a project last week, a 40B, that wants to have 90 cars right in Coolidge Corner, right near the post office and Trader Joe's, entering on and off the very small street behind there. So you can say you don't think it has much effect because there is a T-stop right out in front, but 90 cars on that small street, to me, is a big effect.
Let me remind you that-
By the way, I don't think that was the point he was making.
Recently, very recently, several projects have been built in the Boston area, again in transit-rich environments. I think what you'll find is that the majority of the parking spaces are warehousing cars for the weekend, especially if they're high-end condominiums. People are not driving their cars necessarily, they're storing their cars. I'm one of those myself. I own a car and I park in my driveway, but it only drives on the weekends. I ride my bike to work. I think this is a fairly common strategy of urban dwellers now is they really are warehousing their cars on the weekends. Yes, we do clog the streets on the weekends, but that's to get out of town. We don't commute by vehicle.
I think your point is well-taken with some exceptions. And I think select woman Bailey was mentioning an exception to the general idea that density, you know, is appropriate in traffic in public transportation corridors. So I assume that you're also acknowledging the fact that while that may be the general rule, we have to look at the specific context in order to determine whether it applies there.
Well, and I haven't reviewed the zoning code specifically. Many cities are going to maximum parking required, limits on the amount of parking that specific projects can have. I know that many projects in Boston right now have zero parking. So I'll agree with you that specific cases require specific answers.
So the conversation to this point has been about principles, our zoning, whether we should have parking minimums, parking maximums, where density is appropriate. One of the things that the Planning Board does a lot of is nitty-gritty renovation projects, demolition of garages, you know, the nuts and bolts of building in town. And sometimes those projects are celebrated by everybody, both the proponent and the neighbors, and sometimes they're a little bit contentious.
And sometimes a lot contentious.
Sometimes a lot contentious. I'm wondering if you can shed some light on how you would deal with controversial projects, projects where you've got people who are sort of on opposite ends of the spectrum, a barbell-type situation. How would you find the happy medium? How would you find a broker compromise?
Well, I do work in a lot of public planning environments, sessions where public is engaged in working on problems such as this. Certainly as a consultant, I try to bring out all the viewpoints and try my best to understand what all those viewpoints are, give air to many of the issues, and try to find solutions that are going to be acceptable. However, I think ultimately I'm on a board of several other members and those decisions have to get made by that group ultimately. And I think that viewpoints, alternative viewpoints would be valuable in that setting and the decisions have to be made eventually. I have to admit, I was against all of the parking garages or the renovations in my neighborhood of homes that were adding parking garages to the fronts of their houses. And I complained bitterly against that as being contrary to the pattern of the neighborhood that all had parking garages in the back. And I don't think I would be willing to compromise on that. I think that eventually that should be the rule, but-
So what I hear you saying is that it's about principles, best practices, but also context in which the project is being proposed, that you've got to look not just in isolation at the project site, but also what surrounds it and how it relates to the budding properties.
Well, I think the neighborhood that I'm in is a very cogent, cohesive neighborhood that has a lot of patterns to it that need to be preserved. I don't want to speculate on other neighborhoods. I know my own neighborhood very well. Obviously, yes, you have to look at the context. And I think that in particular, some of the 40B projects need to be thought about in the context of what are the potential impacts of them to adjoining neighbors and residents. Things like shadows and traffic would obviously have to be overriding considerations.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for your interest. We'll be voting probably in the next week or two.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Moving on to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Deanne Coaden.
So my name is Dean Coaden.
Dean?
Yes, it is Dean. But thank you very much for inviting me here, and I did want to start out by thanking you folks for the time that you devote and give to Brookline. It's quite amazing. And now that I'm retired, recently retired from Wayland as a schoolteacher, I do want to give back to my community. And I have been living in Brookline over 30 years and it has, I've done very well by Brookline. My daughter has done very well, and now my grandchildren are benefiting from Brookline. So I am happy to give my service and my time and my energy. This particular advisory board is of interest to me. I'm interested generally in less, in more recycling and that, you know, every town and city everywhere has to really focus on this. When I was at, in Wayland, I did implement quite a large composting program. So we were able to eliminate quite a lot of tonnage from just one elementary school, 600-plus children. The children now pay through five. They know exactly how to separate their food in the cafeteria and they know what gets composted. They take it out to big compost bins that volunteers in the town built. And then it gets dumped, once it's humus, into the garden behind the school, which again, volunteers built wonderful garden beds. And so the children see the whole cycle. But it did reduce a lot of tonnage. So one of my interests down the road, because I know this year the priority is the hybrid pay-as-you-throw system. But down the road, I would love to see something like town-wide composting and better recycling of textiles and plastics and things like that.
Have you, have you been to any of the Commission meetings?
I did. I went to the January meeting. I liked it very much. I especially liked the group of people. I see John Dempsey is here in the audience. I know John from back at Devotion where my daughter was at school. And I did look back at the notes, the minutes for the last six months, so I did see a lot of really good action is being taken.
So I'm interested in your comment that your relevant areas of interest is town-wide styrofoam and soft plastics collection. Were you able to do some sort of program or was there a program in Wayland or any other communities, a collection of this that was more effective?
No, there was a volunteer effort on the styrofoam, you know, but it kind of fizzled out. And I think the same company that Brookline was using that went out of business, Wayland was using. So that was very unfortunate. And as far as the sort of loose plastics and things like that, I don't know what Wayland does. And I know what, you know, Brookline just has the large, you know, star market stop-and-shop picking that up, but I would, there's so much of that. I would love to see that implemented. But I know there needs to be a lot of research and all, which I'm willing to do.
What's your view of the trash, called destruction? You can either burn it or you can bury it.
Burn it or bury it, from an environmental point of view? I would say, I'm not an expert on that. I know there's ways of capturing carbon in both situations. And new technologies being developed for that, for sure. So I really unfortunately couldn't tell you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, so I think-
I'd like to make one comment. The idea of these composting bins at the schools, I mean, it's such a really great idea. I mean, please push that here in Brookline.
Okay, thank you.
I don't believe that we currently do that, but it's both helpful for, you know, for reducing waste, but also teaching kids about recycling and the cycle of products, you know, from their lunchroom table to the composting bin, to the flower bed, to the-
Yeah, they get the whole, the whole cycle. Yes, thank you, I will.
Okay. Thank you. We'll be voting probably in the next few weeks. Okay. And last interview tonight is Kathleen O'Connell. Come join the party. This is for, again, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
Right, yeah. So I am a Brookline resident of almost 30 years now. I'm a town meeting member in my second term, represent, live right over by the Heath School. I also work at Heath School and have worked there for about 18 years now. And at Heath, I've been in charge of the recycling program there for, gosh, probably at least 12 years or so. And I teach fourth grade, the fourth graders do the recycling over there. So it's one of those things where it's become a tradition now, fourth grade. And as a result, I think we do a pretty good job with recycling over there. I also have an interest in composting, which we've tried at Heath and I think some of the other schools. It does take an awful lot of commitment on the part of the staff and everyone to really get composting to work and to get the kids into it. So one area of interest I have as well is maybe working more closely with the science curriculum coordinators to have it become more a part of the curriculum so that, you know, we might have like warm bids in the classrooms and make more of a commitment to do that. I'd love to see the schools be more involved with the recycling because I think just in my classroom every year, I go through a lot with the kids and literally fishing things out of the garbage and talking about what's recycling, what isn't. So I think if we get kids to really be avid recyclers, hopefully down the line, they'll help with that. I'm about four to five years away from retirement, so I'm looking for ways to get more involved in the community. I really have enjoyed being on town meeting, so this to me is kind of a logical next step to start to maybe, you know, get involved a little bit. So hopefully when I retire, it's not such a shock to my system, what am I going to do with all my time? And I do-
Can't spell up enough in town.
Well, and I appreciate, you know, the people who are looking to be on the Planning Board because that is a big-time commitment. I am more than willing to, I've been to several Solid Waste Commission meetings already, and I think for now, a once-in-a-month type of thing with some work in between is what I'm looking for. So, and, you know, another thing I'm really interested in, I don't know enough about it, but I'm curious about whether Brookline's ever explored the idea of a swap shop that would be at the town dump. I know other communities do it, and it just seems like as we're moving towards pay-as-you-throw, we need options for things that people can do with items that they don't need anymore. I mean, obviously, people take them to Goodwill and places like that, but I do think a lot ends up in the trash that maybe could be used by other people, so.
Well, we just, our DPW Commissioner just brought a contract before us a couple of weeks ago with a company that picks up stuff like, so you know, now you might give away the nice sweater you don't use anymore, but this is for the sweater with the holes in it. So there's a company that's going to do curbside pickup of things like that, that, a lot of things that previously might have gone into the garbage, which is good.
Yeah, I thought that, they've talked about that the last two meetings I went to. I thought that was really, sounds like a great idea and I think will help a lot.
So the, believe it or not, the town of Brookline actually once did have a sort of a town-wide composting thing, and you can still see in old houses, this little thing outside in the ground, the little metal round lid to the bins. And there was a pig farm, a town pig farm, and they used to bring all the scraps over to the pig farm.
We've heard that story recently.
I know.
You keep bringing it up.
I keep bringing it up. It is kind of amazing. But the, I'm a very avid composter, and a while ago, the DPW had a program where you could get a compost bin, and I think many people who have houses did do that. But, so if we were going to go to some kind of town-wide composting, we wouldn't have to include all those houses- to include all those houses that are capable of doing their own. You could limit the collection to apartment buildings or areas where people don't have a yard. And that might make it more affordable. So I'm supportive of the idea.
Actually, selectmen data's comments remind me that I went to the DPW open house kind of fair at their facility last spring with my grandchildren. One of the things they were most interested in were the worm shops. These little boxes with worms in them and you put your compost in there, the worms eat the stuff and then they move to the next level and then they keep moving. And you keep filling it up and you empty the dirt at the bottom. So I don't know if you've had experience with that, but our DPW does do some promotion of it. But why I wanted to ask you, so have you been involved or your students been involved with our Climate Action Week?
No, we haven't. You know, I think largely just because actually the curriculum that I cover in fourth grade doesn't really go into that. I think other grades do get into that a little bit, but in fourth grade, we don't really touch upon that too much.
Okay, I think we'll be voting in another week or two.
Great, thank you.
And you'll hear from us. Okay, we have noticed a public hearing on the Waldo Durgan forty B for eight o'clock. I estimate we're running fifteen to twenty minutes behind. So we'll move on to the next item on the calendar. And this is Brookline Interactive Group, their annual report to us.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. And this is new. I think it's my first time with these. So I want to thank you for having me here tonight. I'm still getting used to the long distance and the short distance with the glasses. So you'll have to excuse my glasses calisthenics here. First of all, I just want to thank the town employees, in particular Austin Faison, who is handing out hot off the presses our annual report. It's the second time we've ever done one of these that I know of. And our team put it together and we're really excited about this report. And I will leave some in the back for folks in the audience if they'd like to check them out as well. We also have a winter class flyer that we're going to hand out to you and some information about some virtual reality and augmented reality projects that we're doing at BIG. And I'm going to talk a little bit about them. So I also want to thank Mel Kleckner and Melissa Goff, the Cable Advisory Committee, including Neil Wischinsky, and all of the Board of Selectmen for your support in negotiating a successful contract with Comcast. Thank you. I know that was a difficult process. We also want to convey our gratitude to the eighty-plus community members who spoke up at the public hearings to support Brookline's process to, for BIG to continue to serve as your community media center. So thank you so much to the community. In addition to working with the town on a renewed contract with Comcast, we developed twenty-eight new after-school programs in the last year and a half. We're really excited about these programs. We started a community journalism project, a filmmaking program for low-income women, built a town database called The Thrive Guide, launched an eleven-day film sprint and generated new participation in productions, classes, events, programming, and use of our facility. It's been a very busy year. And I'm going to try to be as short as I can because I know you're running behind. We have over eighteen monthly live programs now. When I came in, we had a couple and our team has done a really good job to cultivate new members and new programs. We have over two hundred and thirty-five students and adults that pass through our shared facility daily and we covered over six hundred and fifteen hours of your town committees and town selectmen meetings and Town Meeting. We increased our offerings and attendance with new digital storytelling, cinematography, DSLR, audio, and three sixty filmmaking classes. We have new partnerships with Steps to Success, with Brookline High School, with the Arts Center, the Teen Center, the Senior Center, where we demo virtual reality and teach media classes regularly and we're training the next generation of content creators. We launched a partnership with Gateway Arts this year where students of varying abilities were able to create digital stories about their artwork. And our volunteers in our journalism program, including Marshall Holly, which probably some of you know, created some amazing stories about, news stories about the Brookline Food Pantry, about the Goddard House Gardens, Porch Fest, the Arts Festival in College Corner, the elections housing in Brookline, and residents who partnered in the both DC and Boston Women's Marches. I was fortunate enough to be there, in fact, and ran into a Brookline family who I was able to interview. So it was very fortuitous that I was able to find them. We also developed some new tech solutions. Some of you may know that we now have these things called Teradex where we can put them on the back of a camera and we can actually go anywhere in the community and shoot live coverage of that event. So one of the places that we're using those pretty heavily is the VHS auditorium. And we now don't actually even need to have staff go over there. We can sit in our control room at BIG and be able to manage that all remotely, which just minimizes the amount of staff time that we're spending and creates some automization, automization of everything. We also created the Public VR Lab, which is the next iteration of participatory media. So we're doing virtual reality, augmented reality, three sixty video. And if you don't understand what I'm talking about, it might be a little clearer when we show the video. But if not, you can come over on Wednesday nights from five to eight and on Fridays from two to three thirty. And it's free virtual reality demos. We have over thirty demos that you can come and experience from Google Maps where you could walk through Florence and see the Duomo as though you're Godzilla. Or you can go on the moon or on Mars or at the bottom of the ocean and experience sea turtles floating around. We also have partnerships with Boston VR, which is the fifth largest meetup in the world now. And over fifty percent of the new visitors coming to BIG this year came because we added virtual reality to the mix of multimedia that we're offering. We also, lastly, before we go to the video, we gave out over five thousand dollars in both the last two years to community producers. And we did this to increase the professionalism of our productions and create a process by which you had to apply for a grant. We gave them grants and we worked with them in a cohort group monthly, every single month, last year and this year, to generate a higher quality of production quality out of our media center. So I'm going to show you a quick video made by our team and then I'll let you know what's coming in 2017. Maybe, I think so.
Will it have sound?
I sure hope so. It does have sound.
We haven't been too successful.
Uh-oh. We actually had Ben, our IT manager, come over and test it twice this week. So hopefully it'll work.
I am, I'm a bashing fan of BIG. It has been a key instrumental player in our major fundraiser that we have been doing, Dancing with the Brookline Stars. They do pre-event filming, they do during the event taping, and they do post-event production. As a result, we have had inquiries from all over the world about this event.
I think it's a great place for people who want to come and work on their own projects. There is plenty of equipment to use. And you can also organize your own events here, such as film screenings and movie theater.
In particular, BIG provides great support and technical assistance with our MLK celebration, the Lunar New Year event, the Age Friendly Cities Committee, the Domestic Violence Roundtable, the programs of the Brookline Commission for Women, so many more throughout the year.
We've had a number of seasons with the Big Book Club and each year it has gotten more engaging and more interactive. We had a great idea for literacy for young children and they've made it happen.
During the last school year, students from Steps to Success have come down to BIG and they've worked on these digital storytelling projects. Kids have made stories about their relationships with their parents. They've also made stories about past vacations that they've taken.
BIG has been particularly exciting for me in that it's a unique organization outside of the schools. And yet, when we talked about ideas and visions we had for what BIG might be able to do in the community for children, there was never a time that it felt like too much for them.
The Public VR Lab is to bring the long tradition of public access media into the VR space. The lab is a collaboration between Brookline Interactive Group and Northampton Community Television to facilitate discussion and activities to support increased hyper-local content creation, public education, and to promote digital inclusion with these new content creation and storytelling spaces. At the Public VR Lab, we're here to help you tell your stories in the next iteration of participatory community media.
I think BIG, through their covering of Town Meeting, Board of Selectmen's Meeting, key meetings that important decisions are going to be made, they're there videotaping. We can take that information and let people know, hey, if you can't be here, it's here.
They insisted that last slide stay in. I tried to get them to take it out, but. So I want to just tell you about some really exciting things, just in summary, that is coming up in 2017. I'm going to pause this. Oh, there's a thank you. Wait a minute. There's some thank yous. We have a lot of interns. We have ten right now, actually, just started last week. And we wanted to thank you guys for all of your work on our behalf. Thank you very much. Make sure there's no other videos starting here. So really exciting this year. We have designated free speech monthly themes that we're asking the community to come in and participate around. In January, we did I Have a Dream. We had members of the community come in and talk about their hopes and dreams for 2017. We invite you, it's still January, we'd love to have you come in. We can set up a time at your convenience. February is going to be What is Love, both romantic and humanistic love. We're doing a March Free Speech Event on Checking Your Sources, a discussion with journalists and the community about media literacy in a world of alternative facts. We're doing a Public VR Lab meetup, VR in the Public Interest, in March also. And then one of the flyers that I gave you was for the Virtual Reality Eco Hack. And we're actually, we're going to be reaching out to some of the climate change folks about this. It's a hackathon in virtual reality, augmented reality, and three sixty video. Participants can win prizes of cash and equipment and other fun prizes. And the focus is that teachers are giving us three lesson plans based on climate change education and science education that participants have to make over the course of a three-day weekend into a VR, AR, or three sixty project. So we're very excited about this and we'd love your support on that as well. And lastly, we're doing an augmented reality project, Kara Bruton. In fact, and I have been plotting a very exciting project with Team Brookline. And Team Brookline has come on as a sponsor. We're going to be planting virtually stories along the marathon route. And just like Pokemon, you can take an app along Beacon Street and you can read the stories of runners, the charities, and also small businesses. So we're very excited about that. We'll tell you more as we get going on that. And in summary, I want to just tell you this one story about the inauguration and the Women's March. Eleven days ago, I had the privilege of attending and interviewing attendees at the inauguration and the Women's March in DC. We asked them what it meant to be an American, what kind of news they digested regularly, what they hope would happen in the next four years, and what steps they planned to take when they went home to their communities. While many shared the very same concerns for our country, they suggested quite different ways to enact these policies. All were convinced that they are very well-informed and completely unbiased in their media source digestion regularly. The reason I bring this up is that I think the need for transparency in government is more critical than ever in media and free speech is perhaps most important than it's ever been. The need for freedom of expression and neutral platforms for sharing your voice has never been as appreciated as perhaps it is now. Not every community has a community media center like BIG and I'm honored to serve our community by protecting each voice in Brookline and providing space for difficult dialogues about what is best for our community and for our country. I hope you'll come into BIG in 2017 and make your voice heard. Thank you so much and available for any questions.
Thank you. I think we're very lucky to have BIG. It's a wonderful facility and I think we're lucky to have you, Kathy. I think you've been doing great things over at BIG. You've been here now, what, two years?
Two years as of December first.
Yeah, right. And I've been the board liaison to BIG, so Kathy and I have worked on a few things together. It's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you and with you as well.
I just have one sort of question or comment. I enjoyed your movie, by the way.
Thank you.
The, I'm a co-chair of Brookline as an age-friendly community and we're very happy that, to have a show through BIG. But I keep saying to, I don't actually work on that, so I'm just like giving the advice without doing any of the work. But I keep saying, why, instead of sitting in a little room and interviewing somebody, you know, if you're talking about parks, why don't you go out to the park? And, you know, it'd be much more dynamic for people that are channel surfing and come across things. And they're saying that you guys don't have the ability to come and.
We do.
With a camera person.
But it means that they need to, yeah, our job really is not to make media for the community, it's to facilitate access to media for the community. So one of the things we've done in the last two years is sort of weaned people off of the model of, we do it all for you. We think it's better to teach people how to fish. So we have created all these programs so that we can train people on how to access these tools and equipment and use them for themselves to go out and make media. And we have many more people actually creating media. Even some of the folks who used to use mostly our staff to do their shows are now doing that on their own.
Okay.
So we can help them to, we'll give them an incubation period to help.
We need to come up with a senior who wants to become a camera person.
Absolutely. And we also, the citizen journalism program's also a good place, community journalism program's also a good place to ask, hey, we have this one specific thing that's happening on this day, would a volunteer from the community journalism program come out and maybe do a story on it?
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sure. I think we're still about, we're running about twenty minutes behind. So I apologize. We had the late insertion of the Sanctuary City discussion, which set us back a bit. So we have two more items before the Waldo Durgan public hearing. And that's, the first one is the Brookline Commission for the Arts. Amy Emmer, co-chair of Brookline Commission for the Arts, will appear to present information regarding the search for a new Brookline poet laureate and a summary of the Massachusetts Cultural Council grants approved of Brookline by the BCA.
Thank you. She's representing the BCA and I just want, I'll be very quick because I know people are anxious to move along. I just wanted to announce, as you said, the opening for applications for the next Brookline Poet Laureate. In early 2012, the Board of Selectmen inaugurated the Town of Brookline Poet Laureate Program. Our poet laureate, Jan Schreiber, will end his tenure March thirty-first of this year. Brookline Commission for the Arts, which coordinates the program, is now accepting applications for the Town Poet Laureate. The deadline for submitting applications is March first. The Town will appoint the poet to a two-year term which begins April first and it will be announced before April, which happens to be National Poetry Month. First, we'd like to express our gratitude to Jan Schreiber, our current poet laureate, for his dedication and creative approach to programming during the 2015 and 2017 term. Jan presented a number of programs at the library primarily that drew poets, translators, and even musicians. They were very interesting. Jan's generously offered to serve on the committee to identify our next poet laureate. The poet laureate's mission is to enhance the town's cultural life, promote awareness and appreciation of poetry and literary arts, and connect members of the community through poetry. The duties include public performances, outreach to Brookline schools, libraries, and community centers, and initiating projects to energize the town's residents to the spirit and power of the written and spoken word. The position has an annual stipend of two thousand dollars, which is generously underwritten at present by Bay State Federal Savings Foundation and the Friends of the Brookline Library. And we're always sort of casting about for grants for this program. The program's open to all residents of. The program's open to all residents of Brookline who have a substantial body of work, including published poems, and demonstrated a commitment to the community. Full description of the program and the poet laureate's duties is available on the Brookline Commission for the Arts website. It's BrooklineArts.org. Or you may contact Ms. Julian Jackson, our administrator, at 617-730-2135. A selection committee, as I said, will compose of commissioners and Brookline residents will convene in March to review the applications and make a selection. Residents interested in joining this committee should also contact Ms. Julian Jackson. Thank you. Another announcement is that we have, we have made our way through the annual process of determining the awards that come through to Brookline from the Mass Cultural Council. We, I just wanted to make the statement that, you know, we're very fortunate in Massachusetts to benefit from the Mass Cultural Council's local cultural council program, which is the largest grassroots cultural funding network in the country. Each year, local councils, including Brookline Commission for the Arts, award more than $3 million in grants to more than 6,000 cultural programs statewide. Pleased to announce that the 2017 grants for applications to the Brookline Commission for the Arts were very strong. We were lucky, this year was, it was a very straightforward process. We went through two rounds of review. We had established guidelines, including cultural impact, the life of Brookline, potential to add value beyond the specific activity, that the target audiences were, the projects would prioritize target audiences to include diverse and underserved, and that the plan of work was feasible and could be done within the year following the, this coming 2000 year, calendar year. We've also set limits on how long any group can receive awards to three years, after which they need to step away, and they can come back and reapply after a year. We had 31 applications over the course of two meetings dedicated to reviewing these applications. As I said, we ended up with 13 awards for a total of $11,300. That's all the money Brookline receives, because we're not, you know, it's, it's based on other funding that comes through from the state. Film and video comprised 17% of the funding. We distributed 31% of the funding to music projects, 19% to theater and puppetry projects, and 32% to visual arts. I did provide a written report, I believe you have, which has more detail about the projects. A grantee reception for the awardees will be held Monday, May 8th, 2017, at 6:00 PM in Hunneman Hall. And the next grant application deadline will be October 15th, 2017. We welcome input on this at any time and look forward to another year.
Okay. Bernard, Sleckman Green.
Yeah, I would just like to say that, you know, I really appreciate the work that Jan Schreiber has done as our poet laureate, particularly with respect to the Martin Luther King celebration event. A couple of years ago, I asked him to work with us and sort of figure out how to incorporate poetry into that event, both because of the importance of poetry and the role it plays in really enabling people to think beyond, you know, sort of narrow boxes, but also because of the, the significance that poetry held for Martin Luther King, both in his speeches as well as the way that he expressed himself. And Jan really helped us to figure out ways to incorporate poetry into the event, and it was very, very successful. People really, really appreciated that. And I think it sort of gave a lot of people an appreciation of how powerful, you know, good poetry can be, and the role that it plays in, in things outside of sort of the literary box. So, you know, my thanks to Jan and, and of course, your involvement and efforts to continue that program.
He's been very generous. I do want to say also that that same day, we were holding an open mic in the library to celebrate music series, and Jan found time to come by and read some poems, and he sort of sparked a bunch of people to get up, including myself, to read our own poems. And it was, it's, the open mics are turning out to be not just about music, but in part because of his contributions.
I just want to give a quick plug to this grantee reception. I have attended the past three years, and it is the best free ticket in town. You not only feel empowered and, and grateful about all the, the work that the Commission for the Arts does and the, the talent that's in, within Brookline, but you also get to see some snippets of high-quality art and hear about exciting opportunities to take an even additional arts programming in the coming weeks and months. So, highly worth the free ticket.
Thank you.
Sleckman Daley.
I just want to say, I was reading through the, the project descriptions for your, your grant awards, and I'm impressed that you guys managed to span visual arts, theater, music, and experimental film and things all, all being done locally, so that's exciting.
That was intentional. Thank you. I'll say?
Okay. Yeah, thank you. One more item before we get to the Lualdo Durgan, and this is a discussion of the letter that we're going to be sending to Mass Housing regarding, which is the result of the 40B public hearing we had last week regarding 1299 Beacon Street. So, our planning staff took the comments that came from the public and as we, as the board summarized and tried to get it into a letter. Now, this letter is kind of a supplement, supplement to an earlier letter, so it's really commenting on, on the changes since the original proposal was made. And in, in summary, the, the tone of the letter is basically, yeah, while the project is a bit smaller, we still have a lot of problems with it. It's still significantly higher than nearby properties. The reduction in height by two to four stories, and it was, it was originally a 14-story building, now it's down to 10, and with one level of underground parking accessible through a, an auto elevator. Still doesn't work on the site. It overwhelms the property. There continues to be no setbacks. Footprint is molded awkwardly, into an awkwardly shaped parcel, and doesn't follow the design guidelines of the subsidizing agencies. We commented extensively on the, the lack of vehicular access on Sewell Avenue and, and the conditions on that road. We commented on the ability of emergency vehicles getting to the Longwood Medical Area needs to be examined, that, and, and this can't make that any worse, and, and the impact of the traffic must be mitigated, though I don't know how it can be. Comments on the complex parking scheme, most notably the auto elevator and the valet parking. We question the sustainability and the noise. They have car stackers, and that's really going to have to be examined. There's also a question of access to an egress, egress from an adjoining property, and we'll be including a letter from the adjacent property owner. We also received a, a recent letter from the applicant that I think I forwarded to you. If not, make su, and we should include that, so Mass Housing has both sides. We comment that this is in the Beacon Street National District, and there needs to be Mass Historic Commission involvement. And that's kind of a summary of the letter. Sleckman Green.
I have two comments. I think in general, the loose use of adverbs can be distracting, distracting in a letter, and I would suggest taking out the word vehement. They know the tone of our original letter and the tone of our meetings. I just think that takes away from this. Okay, now, to something more substantive. I didn't really see too much, or if any, discussion of the lot's size. And I think that, you know, that's important because a lot's size really drives the height of the building, among other things, in terms of making it necessary to have those stories to make the, the project economical. I mean, it's a very small, irregularly shaped lot size, and I think that's a significant point that we should mention.
I think if, maybe you can work it, make, the top of the second page, there's a paragraph, despite the modest reduction in height, the proposed building overwhelms the property. So maybe you can, but, continue, have virtually no setbacks, footprint is molded into an awkwardly shaped parcel, circulation pattern is dysfunctional. Um, I don't know. I think your comment is, is there. Remember, this is kind of a supplemental letter, and the first one was quite strong, yeah.
Yeah, I would just like to include on, on page two, the third paragraph down, the vehicular access to Sewell Avenue. I think you need to start that paragraph by saying, this project proposes to have, I believe it's 99 cars, plus garbage collection, plus deliveries, all coming on and off this little road. So I think you need to make it clear at the beginning of that paragraph, just what they're proposing to do, that...
That's in the next paragraph. It's the, the sheer volume of additional traffic, number of cars entering, exiting the garage, the high activity of motorists, delivery, and postal trucks, bicyclists, pedestrians. I think it's all there.
Yeah. Okay. Maybe it needs to be rearranged. I want it specifically with relation to this small, one-way street. I want it tied to the, you know, exactly what they're proposing for this street, which makes it very clear that there's a mismatch between...
Are you planning, Ms. Steinfeld, are you planning to include the letter from Temple Sinai?
All letters submitted to the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
Because I think it's a particularly important letter. It outlines very clearly and fairly succinctly the safety and the dangers of putting that much stress on Sewell Avenue. Not only the difficulty for emergency vehicles getting by, the amount of traffic, but there are a lot of children who go to that facility for educational purposes. And I, I think we need to stress that. We need to, to make sure that we reiterate, that they're talking about 160-plus children, preschoolers to high school students who come down Sewell Avenue to the religious school, and they also rent to several other schools, including, by the way, Art Barn, which was one of the subjects of the grant from the Arts Council that we heard from before. So, you know...
So maybe what we can do is somewhere in the vehicular access section, we can reference this Temple Sinai letter and note the existence of the school and lots of children.
And the strong objections of the, of the facility to this project for safety reasons.
Right. Okay. So, what I'm going to suggest, we're under a deadline to get this letter out. I'm going to suggest that I continue to work with Director Steinfeld, and I guess tomorrow or, or Thursday, we'll get that letter out. So I'll, I'll ask for authorization to sign the letter, take into account the comments that the board has, and you're just going to have to trust me.
I'm willing to do that.
That I get it done? Okay. So I'll move that the chair be authorized to sign the letter to Mass Housing as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. Sleckman Daley?
Aye.
Sleckman Franco?
Aye.
Sleckman Heller?
Aye.
Sleckman Green?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Now we're on to the main event. So this is a, a public hearing on the application for a project eligibility letter to Mass Development for the Coolidge Residences at Brookline, which is a, a project that's being proposed at 8 to 10 East Hill Street. Austin, can you turn that sound off? So let me just kind of lay the, the foundation here. Where the town is under, I'll, I'll call it a deluge of 40B applications, and chapter 40B allows a developer to propose and, and eventually build a project greater than our normal zoning would allow if 20 or 25% of the units are pledged for affordable housing at state-prescribed levels. A town is subject to 40B while roughly, and it, it is a little more nuanced and complicated than, than I'm going to state it, but I'll state the simple rule. Until, until 10% of the town's housing units are in what's called the subsidized housing inventory. And for us, there's approximately 20, I want to say 26,000 units. We are, right now, today, we're about 300, just under 350 units short. We're currently at 8.6%. And the door is closing, and the door is closing very quickly. And because the door is closing, a combination of the door closing, the strong economy, folk, folks who own property are realizing that unless they get their applications in now, they're not going to be able to build higher than our zoning allows. So this project before us here tonight is the 10th project at various stages of, of the approval process. So this is the 10th public hearing of this type that this board has had in the last, I want to say, six months, six or seven months, somewhere in that range. And I believe six or seven of those projects have been in the Coolidge Corner area. So I see a lot of familiar faces, unfortunately. Though I'm, I'm glad you're here because we, we need to hear from you.
Can I, can I just add to, to what you just said? And for some of you who maybe didn't come to some of the other hearings, we are, this board is not promoting these projects. We are having to deal with a state law that sort of imposes on us these, the, the ability of developers to override our local zoning. So we, as our you neighbors, we are trying to deal with the consequences, and we're not, we're not promoting these, and, you know, we, we wish we could tell everyone to stay within our, our local zoning.
Well, although we are, we are supporting at least one of the 40B applications.
Well, that's, that's true.
Right. So, let, let me finish.
Okay.
Um, I know, I know you want, you want me to get through it. Now I lost my train of thought. So what, what, what the process is, is first, a developer applies to a state subsidizing agency for what's known as a project eligibility letter. And the, the subsidizing agency, and there are four subsidizing agencies, sends us back a letter saying, hey, hey, town, so-and-so developer has applied for a project eligibility letter. What do you think about it? So what we've started doing is not just us and department heads analyzing, and departments analyzing, we've, we've been asking the public to weigh in, and that, and that's what this public hearing is. This is to provide input to... This is to provide input to us when we provide our comments to the state subsidizing agency. And the subsidizing agency on this particular project is an agency called Mass Development. This is, we've seen more projects with some of the other subsidizing agencies. We haven't seen too many with Mass Development. And there are differences between the agencies, which are kind of beyond me. But the effect is the same. So once the developer gets a project eligibility letter, they can then apply for what's called a comprehensive permit. And that's when the process begins with the zoning board of appeals. And then there are timeframes, and there's a clock that starts running. So after this, the developer will then go to Mass Development, perhaps get a project eligibility letter, and then they would apply for a comprehensive permit. Now, this developer, Chestnut Hill Realty, has already told us that they're willing to engage with the town on an alternate project. And we've convened a committee to begin working with Chestnut Hill Realty on that project. I see some members of that committee in the room. So hopefully, what you're going to see today is not going to be the ultimate outcome. But I think, even though that alternate process will be happening, I think we need to assume, for purposes of this hearing, that this is being proposed at face value. And we have to take this seriously, because this is going to the state, and they're asking the state for the ability to build what you're going to see. So even though that alternate process is happening, we have to assume that this is a possibility. So please, when you're commenting, you know, comment on what you see here. And we will take that into account when we submit our comments to Mass Development. Another thing I'll say, and we've seen this in some of the other public hearings, I know when large developments are proposed in your neighborhood and my neighborhood, it can be an emotional thing. And so, but I'm going to ask that you kind of check your emotions. And please try to be civil in your comments. Talk about the project. Let's not have any character assassinations or anything like that. So we have a history of being civil in our political discourse. So I hope that'll continue. So anyone want to add anything before we go on? Did I miss anything? Another thing I'll say is, the last thing I'll say is, because of the onslaught of projects, and really, the numbers of fortyBs that are before us is unprecedented in state history, or in the history of fortyB. The State Department of Housing and Community Development has given us some administrative relief in the... And what they've done is they've given us some more time to process the fortyB applications once the comprehensive permit has been applied for. But they've also given us the ability to stay new projects until some of our backlog has been worked through. So even if this project were to start the fortyB process in earnest, you know, right after the comprehensive permit was applied for, we would, under the administrative relief we got, we don't have to start holding a public hearing until the later of April one or we have four projects in the pipeline. And it's going to be a while before we get down to that number. So, you know, what you see here isn't going to be happening immediately, even if that other process falls apart. So would that say...
Well, I think we should mention the one project that we have been more supportive of among all of these, as Selectman Franco had started to mention. And I believe he was referring to the project at the, what's known as the KI site, the JCHG project, which is a hundred percent affordable. And the developers in that project paid close attention to the neighborhood and the concerns of the neighbors, and I think reflected those in the project, the ultimate project design.
The only thing I'll add is it's a hundred percent affordable senior housing, which is a category of affordable housing that we in Brookline are particularly concerned about. And I echo the comments of Selectman Heller that it was certainly an iterative process. And there were a lot of meetings between the neighborhood and the developer. And I think we ended up with a project that everybody is, can live with and is happy with.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to just add one thing. The project we're talking about is a great project, and, you know, I supported it along with everyone else. I think we need to be careful about saying that Brookline is implicitly slanted towards just elderly housing. Because that really goes against a number of other issues that are important to this town.
I think what I meant to say is it's a category of housing that we're particularly short of in terms of affordable housing. Of course, like affordable housing of all types, but I note that the deficiency, the deficit in the number of affordable units we have, particularly for seniors.
Well, and I would also point out that the neighborhood, the Coolidge Corner neighborhood precinct, it's actually precinct two or eight, is the Dummer Street additions, which are family housing, were very support, highly supported by the neighborhood. And those are truly for people who are very much at the bottom of the income heap. And that they were welcomed by the neighborhood. They got a project which is very much in scale with the buildings around it and paying attention to things, issues like open space and design of the neighboring buildings. So I think that that's an important point.
And they're also family-oriented housing. So I think it's important that people not believe that, you know, Brookline is in any way downgrading the importance of family-focused housing, even though they bring kids into the schools.
Right.
That's an issue of integration, racial integration, which I think is often overlooked and...
This town heavily supported financially the affordable housing projects at Fisher Hill and also at St. Aidan's, both of which are family housing. So...
Can we get started? Thank you. Mr. Levin?
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman Woszynski, board members, town administrator and planning director. My name is Mark Levin. I'm with Chestnut Hill Realty. Along with me tonight is Steve Schwartz, our forty-B attorney, K. O. Kindermans with StanTech, who does our site design and civil engineering, and Margaret Murphy, who is our housing advisor. I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to share our project with you. The site, which I'll show you in a minute, has two underutilized buildings and a parking area, and is an excellent candidate for redevelopment. We are proposing a project that reflects what we do well, an apartment development with amenities and affordability. We will be filing a comprehensive permit once we have our P.E.L., our project eligibility letter. It's important to note, as Neil mentioned, that we're currently working with the town's Economic Development Group and housing advisors on alternative programs. After we filed our comprehensive permit application, we anticipate postponing the forty-B hearings until after fall town meeting in hopes of coming to an agreement on an alternative project with the town. Chestnut Hill Realty was established in nineteen sixty-nine by Ed Zucker, who is a Brookline native. Chestnut Hill Realty owns and manages over forty-seven hundred apartments. Ten of the apartment home communities are right here in Brookline. Here we have the locust map of the Waldo-Durgan site. You can see you have Harvard Street, Beacon Street. This is Pleasant and John Street. Over here is St. Paul. Closer up, you see that the site consists of the Waldo Garage, the Durgan Garage, and a parking lot that fronts onto John Street. The Durgan Garage has an auto body shop, restaurant, convenience store, and a green grocer. It abuts three-story condominiums to the north and west, one- and two-story commercial space to the southwest and south, and to the east is Pelham Hall. The site itself is blocked visually from the one- and two-story commercial spaces along Harvard and Beacon. Here you have some of the existing conditions. This is Waldo Street, and this here is the Durgan Garage. Here's another view of the Durgan Garage. This is Pleasant, this is John Street, and this is Pleasant Street. This is further in now on Waldo Street, and here you have the Waldo Garage. And here is, to the right are the retail stores along Beacon Street. So these are cars that are parking behind that. Sort of in the shadow here is the Waldo Garage, and in the background is Pelham Hall. Here you have a picture, sorry, of the John Street parking lot. So our program is comprised of three hundred and twenty market rate and affordable studio, studio, one, two, three, and four-bedroom apartments. The first floor includes a management office, amenity space, and one level of on-grade parking. Above, there's twenty stories of apartments stepping down to nine stories. There is additional amenity space and a roof deck and pool at the tenth story. We have three hundred and thirty-three covered parking spaces in two levels of garage beneath grade and one level at grade. There's a landscape green space courtyard in the center of the project. Here's a view of the apartment mix. The majority of the units are smaller, with a hundred and eighty-eight either one-bedrooms or studios. We have sixty-four, or twenty percent of the total, affordable units. And here you have the breakdown. They're for families earning at or below fifty percent of the area median income. The amenities include a lobby, leasing and management office, Wi-Fi center, fitness center, pool, and landscape green space. The market rate rents start at twenty-six hundred dollars, and the affordable rents range from seven hundred and fifty to a thousand and fifty-six.
Could you also say what the range for the market rate units are?
Well, the range is very wide, because we have, at the very top, we have these large penthouse units that are priced as high as thirteen thousand dollars a month. I can't afford to live there, I can tell you that.
But what about the three-bedroom, lower-level units?
Eighty-four hundred.
No.
Eighty-four, eighty-seven.
Is it still that high? Wow.
All right, let's talk about the site access.
I ask that because, you know, those type of rent rates in this community is going to jack up rents for everyone. And that's going to have devastating impact on affordability in general, as well as, in my opinion, integration, racial integration in the town. It's not a forty-B issue, but it's an issue that I think we need to be mindful of and make sure elected officials appreciate it.
Okay. Access to the site, we have two-way access into the site off of John Street. Here you have the, coming in and going out. We have access into the site only off of Waldo Street, although the retail here, different property owner, has to egress both in and out of Waldo. Both provide access to the central courtyard and green space, which we envision as a European courtyard, shared-street concept. We anticipate this will become a pedestrian pass-through, right through underneath here, for area residents and people walking in the neighborhood. The MBTA Green Line is adjacent to the site, and the bus line goes up and down Harvard Street. There's no change in the level of roadway service, as expected, at nearby signalized intersections. And the parking is situated so as not to be visible from the street. Here's a view of the access into and out of the site along John Street. So we have two levels of garage underground, as I mentioned, and there's three hundred and thirty-three total spaces. This is the lower-level garage. This is the upper-level garage. And here you, on the first floor, we have parking at grade. And we have lobby and amenity space along John and Pleasant Street.
What's the total number of parking spaces?
Three thirty-three. Here you have the second floor. The residential floors start here. And notice that what we've done is we've stepped back, started to step back the building, and we'll continue to do so as we go up.
Kind of like the Empire State Building.
Right. Only we do it sooner. We're doing so so that it has less of an impact on the pedestrian zone. Here you have floors three through nine. And here it steps back again. You see at floor ten, and you have a swimming pool and additional amenity spaces adjacent to it. Here below, you have floors eleven through eighteen, and those very large expensive four-bedroom units at the very top, floors nineteen through twenty-one. Here's a rendering of the landscape green space. What we did was we pulled the building back as far as we could from the budding condominiums to create that space. Here we have a depiction of the buildings along Beacon Street. The Beacon Street corridor contains many high-rises. Here you have fifteen forty Beacon and fifteen thirty Beacon. Those are both fourteen stories. Here you have fifteen oh one, which is eighteen stories.
Sixteen. We should, I checked.
Sixteen stories. We can talk about that. And here's our site. Next to the site is the nine-story Pelham Hall. And down the street on Pleasant Street, there's another nine-story where the BHA senior housing exists. We think the heart of Coolidge Corner is the right location for a signature building like this. Here's a rendering of fifteen forty, fifteen thirty, fifteen oh one. Here we have a rendering across Harvard Street. Here we have a rendering across Harvard Street, Beacon is on the right, of the building as modeled. If you cross the street going this way, if you cross over Beacon Street on the same side of Harvard, this is the view. Here's a listing of what we consider the project benefits. We're creating high-quality market rate and affordable housing. We're repurposing underutilized and dilapidated commercial property. We're producing housing near convenient public transportation. We're providing housing for people with mobility issues who need one-floor living and an elevator. We're improving the streetscape, and we're housing additional customers for area businesses. And that is my presentation.
See, you're not going to show us the... You're not going to show us the perspective that's been in the Globe?
I like, I like these better.
Okay.
What is the total number of units?
Three twenty.
Well, I was quoted in the Globe accurately saying, "I thought that this building was more appropriate for the financial district and the seaport." But I've since learned that you couldn't do it in the seaport because it'd be a hazard to aviation.
It's a good thing we're not in the flight path.
Right, okay. But seriously. Some questions from the board?
I don't even have any questions. I'm just, I mean, it's overwhelming, the proposed size and the number of cars added to Coolidge Corner.
So I have to say, the rendering looks a lot like the Wing Casino that's proposed. So I hope that what you're showing is illustrative, not, not a definite architectural design.
Absolutely not. I can say that...
Absolutely, it is illustrative. Or no?
It is not illustrative of what the ultimate architectural design would look like, I suspect.
But is it illustrative of how it'll loom over the other buildings?
The mass, it is, the massing is as shown.
So one of the other things I was struck by is you showed some of the other tall buildings to, in your view, provide some context for this 21-story proposal, is that those other buildings are set back from the street. And I noticed that, that you're not showing a setback from, from John Street or from Pleasant Street. Is that something that we might see change through the comprehensive permit process? Or are you pretty set that you're going to go up to the property line?
The, like, let me answer that two ways. Number one is we went through a 40B process in South Brookline, and during that process, we made major modifications to our program. It was a very iterative and cooperative, if you will, back and forth with the planning and ZBA. And so it evolved. The project evolved. As far as the setbacks go, there's a lot of different schools of thought in terms of wanting to maintain a streetscape. And we've heard, we even heard feedback last night about the idea of setting, setting it back as opposed to utilizing the form and architecture of the Durgan Garage. We're flexible, and we're, we're open to discussing that. Like I say, some people really are firm believers in having a streetscape right along the sidewalk and then setting building back so that the people who are passing by can't even see the building. You would only, you know, you don't see the building when you're up against it, up against the front piece on either side. But you will see it, obviously, from across the street, as you could tell.
And then the final question from me. I note that you've got two levels of below-grade parking, which I assume have to be vented someplace. I think that there are some three-story condos, both on John Street and on Green Street, and I would hope that the venting wouldn't be on their back decks or somewhere along the pedestrian cut-through that you imagine happening, that it would be vented away from places where people are going to congregate.
There, I believe there are those opportunities.
I found one of your descriptions interesting in the conceptual project design. "The apartment tower rises from the midst of all this activity. This is housing shops, services, and Coolidge Corner. When its glass skin reflects the changing sky, it creates a tower with a pale, summer-like appearance." So are you looking at glass as sort of the summer-like appearance, like the Hancock Building?
Or Millennium, perhaps? Actually, that was one of the, one of the positive reviews of some of the local architects of Millennium. We tried it on for size. Doesn't feel very comfortable. I think that, you know, Ed, the owner, and Zooker is very tuned in and sensitive to architecture, and he would like to see whether it's through the 40B process or through the other process, a building that is more consistent with some of the older buildings in Brookline, be that, you know, brick, precast, limestone, those types of materials as opposed to glass. We're not, we're certainly not wed to glass. It was just a notion.
Okay. Slakman, Helen?
So you describe this project as a project for market rate and affordable units. What is market rate about $8,000 to $13,000 a month?
The, the market rate units start at $2,500 a month, as I mentioned. And so there's a wide range, and it does go up to, obviously, a very high number. But once again, in the process of the, of the, of the 40B process, you know, if, for instance, we were to reduce the building by three stories, all of a sudden, those very high, the very expensive ones are gone. That's not, you know, that, the range starts shrinking as the height goes down, so.
Well, I would like to say for the record that I agree with Slakman-Green that this kind of housing really does, defeats the notion, the, the efforts to integrate this community, to bring middle-class housing to Brookline. Affordable housing is necessary, but also our middle class is suffering. And this is not middle-class housing. This is housing for the very rich, even $8,000 a month. You'd have to have an income of, you know, half a million dollars to support that kind of a rent. So I would just like to say that, to me, mass development should not be supporting projects that completely, you know, they have a few affordable units, and then they just, you know, gouge the public to the max. And I'm unhappy about that.
Well, I agree with you. This is, this is not middle-income housing.
Okay, I think it's time to hear from folks. There was a sign-up sheet out in the lobby. What I'll do is I'll, I'll go and order the sign-up sheet, and then I'll ask anyone else who wishes to speak. Just to get a sense of the room, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. I have 15 people signed up. If you haven't signed up and you wish to speak, just raise your hand. I just want to get a sense. Two, four, six, seven, seven or eight, so 22. So if everybody goes, oh, three minutes max, we're going to be here for over an hour. So three minutes, okay? Okay, one question?
Yeah, how does this compare to the presentation made with the neighborhood about two weeks ago? With the exception of Coolidge?
How does it compare?
In terms of, yeah.
Well, this is, it's a different project. It's a bigger building. This is the biggest building, this is the biggest 40B that's being presented to us. If, as proposed, it would be the tallest building in Brookline by far. So that's how it compares. So, Richard Struck?
Hi, I want to thank you guys all for...
Before you start, let me just say something. I've said it every one of these. If someone has made your, the point you're going to make, it's okay if you say, "Hey, I agree with so-and-so," and then make a different point. And I think it'll be a much more efficient use of your time. So instead of hearing the same points over and over, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Richard Struck and I, do you need my address for the, I don't know if that's...
Sure, throw it out there.
Fifty, I'm actually on, at 51 John Street, so kind of kitty-corner from where this project is proposed. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Wyszynski, who kind of brought me up to speed a little bit on 40B. I'm new to these kind of conversations, so hopefully I'll be relevant here. I hadn't intended to start here, but, and I hope I've got the right information here, but I'm looking at, just to echo some of the comments made on rent. Although it sounded modest to speak about $2,500 for a, some of the smaller units, I'm looking here, that appears to be for 480 square feet. I, I don't see, I'm looking, this major area, I don't see anything that even approaches, even close to what rents are like in Brookline. I would say that 1,100 square feet, just off the top of my head, roughly goes for about $2,700 a month now. The rates I'm seeing for those kind of sizes here are $5,480 at a minimum. So I, I don't, maybe I'm misreading, but I don't think it's accurate to characterize any of the units in here, except maybe the affordables, which actually look like they're tipping into what's market rent right now, so.
But that's not, I don't, I don't think we can, that's not a valid 40B.
Okay.
Are you sure?
Well, we can, we will comment on...
Well, as I said, I just wanted to kind of amplify. I apologize if that's not relevant to what I'm supposed to be commenting on, but...
It may not be relevant to 40B, but it's very relevant to the town. And although it's not going to affect, you know, this project, the legislature needs to know about these concerns.
Okay. And so let me try to get more on point. I understand there are some very specific ways in which one needs to address this issue. I'm going to try to touch on what I hope are two. If I understand correctly, there are mandates for the sensitivity with which a project like this goes forward in the community. I, I think this will be echoed again and again. Certainly, I think we would welcome revitalization in this area of Brookline. I don't think anybody disputes that, and affordable housing, I think, would be welcome. It's just the scale, I think, was we all recognize immediately on which this is going on, is of real concern. My understanding is that there are issues of programming, scale, massing, that these need to be attended to sensitively. And I don't see that a 21-story building at this location does that, no matter what the vernacular, no matter what the architecture, the typology. I'm just concerned it really misses the mark. And although I, I understand where the developers are going by showing some of the other larger-scale buildings, I, I'm not sure even that really recognizes the way the, the way the height of buildings changes as you move towards Boston. Right in Coolidge Corner, I think we're limited to some of the smaller sizes. And, you know, there's some talk about how you would see this from the sidewalk, but we experienced the buildings from all different levels in Coolidge Corner. I live, as I said, about a block away, and this would obliterate the skyline for us. I mean, this would just be, you know, an obscenity. I hate to say it. I think everybody will recognize that pretty quickly. The other issue I will just...
Quickly?
Yes, the carrying capacity of the community. The traffic, there, I saw some traffic studies that said it would be, the impact would be minimal. I find that hard to believe. I did a quick estimate, and I see this building housing at least 1,000 people or 800, kind of at a minimum. I think at least we need to keep in mind that currently, that road along John Street is the evacuation route for the children from Devotion, for emergency drills and for real emergencies. Now, I know Devotion's being reimagined. I've been part of that, and that could change somewhat, but certain... The fire station leaves from there, and, so that's basically it. I'm worried about the scale of the activity.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Sure. This is a handwriting I'm having trouble reading. Carol Frenskin? Number...
Are you Carol?
What's your name?
Karen.
And what's your last name?
I'm Karen of Babcock. I, um...
Karen of Babcock is not on the list.
Yeah, it's, it's under Friends Know.
Oh, okay, so three minutes.
Okay. Well, I, I've studied urban planning, three classes of it, as a matter of fact. And I've been displaced because of a company surrounding my home. And I just wanted to say that the reason why there are so many 40Bs is because I, a businessman said to me, "Residents don't belong in Boston, so we're being forced out everywhere else." And I'd love to move closer to Coolidge Corner. Not that I agree with having 40, 10 40Bs in the same place, but I, I need a place to stay now, too, because I'm currently feeling like I'm displaced, and I do need to move in about a year or so. So in terms of the regardless of immigration status, I find it disgusting that the chronically homeless and now people that are not citizens are going to be the number-one priority. That's disgusting. I'm a good tenant, I have excellent credit, references, whatever. And, you know, then you say, "Well, one stranger is ourselves." The difference is, is that my grandfather had no help. They were almost homeless, and he lost many of his fingers, thanks to the job. So I think the intent of being responsible for those here is what matters. And, you know, get in line. And I also wanted to say, I'm afraid of the, afraid of the reprisals by Trump and his army, because who's going to suffer? Those with lower incomes. I'm depending upon the community block grants that the housing authorities will receive. And I don't think the lottery is fair either, because it eliminates choice. I can't decide which place I'm going to move into, or I'm not, I'm not allowed to decide because I don't even know if I get into any places.
Do you have comments about this project?
There's, yeah, there's nothing for singles or, you know, singles and such professionals in terms of 40B, and it is the best housing. And I just, you know, I'm looking forward to also receiving the T-Pass. So I'm for and against 40Bs, and I really strongly advise you to work with the neighborhood, because I love living in a town that's next to public transit, not a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Caro and after Frank is Manuel Haber?
Mariel.
Mariel, I'm sorry.
Hi. Yeah, I'm Frank Caro. I live at 1264 Beacon Street. I'm a town meeting member in Precinct 10. I'm also a member of the Oversight Committee. My first, I, you know, should, should say that I think, you know, I agree that redevelopment on this site is appropriate. The, the issue is really the scale of it. I want to, in my, my comments, I'm clearly, like everybody else, shocked by the proposed size of this. I have nothing additional to add on that, but I'd, I'd like to focus specifically on some of the traffic issues. And I'm, because of where, where, the location of my residence, and, and I am particularly focused on Beacon Street and the entrance to Pleasant Street and the traffic that moves from Pleasant Street onto Beacon Street. We already have a significant traffic problem around rush hour on Beacon Street. We have traffic backed up on Pleasant Street that has difficulty getting into, getting onto Beacon Street. Then, one of, one of the two entrances to this site is Waldo Street. And Waldo Street kind of is a little bit of a dogleg, I suppose you would call it, off, off Beacon Street. And Waldo Street kind of is a little bit of a dogleg, I suppose you would call it, off Beacon Street. And there's really enormous potential for traffic to back up for people who are turning off Beacon Street, wanting to get into Waldo Street and enter the property. You know, we currently don't have traffic really going in and out of Waldo Street at all. So this is, you know, going to create traffic where there currently is none. We even have the potential for the traffic that is trying to come off Beacon Street to get backed up on Beacon Street, so we have an additional source of backup. I can imagine that we hear from bicyclists, who's the bike lane on Beacon Street being blocked by people trying to turn off, enter, well, I suppose you, I'm not sure what that, if there's a name for that, that, that turnoff, whether that's considered part of Waldo Street or not.
The turnoff.
The turnoff. But there really is a potential for a lot of congestion there.
Right.
And, and I, you know, I hope that you note that in your comments. So I'll make that single point, thank you.
Thank you. Mariel, and then Ralph Tracy is next, after Mariel. Muriel, I'm sorry.
Muriel.
Hi, everybody. I hope you've read this article that was in the tab, which kind of says everything that I feel. I think this was very explicit, and it is something that you should take part in. I live at 24 John Street, in the back of my apartment, faces Waldo Street. It is disgusting right now, there are a lot of indigent people who come there, they smoke pot, there are cars that go in and out of that area constantly, some of them don't even belong there, that's for sure, I know. But the idea of having a tall building cutting off all our light, not only John Street, but Green Street, that's disgusting. This building does not belong in our area. We have a very nice community here, you're going to add more children, more traffic. It's going to be a detriment to our electricity, our water supply, more garbage, more people in a small amount of area. It doesn't belong. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, this will also go quicker if we don't applaud, but I know it's hard not to.
Good evening, I live on Green Street.
And after Ralph Tracy Jonathan Winikoff, is after, okay, I'm sorry.
I live on Green Street between John and Thatcher. Parking situation is horrendous on that stretch of street. It's a two-hour parking, there's two signs on either end of that stretch of street. Plus, we have the temple next door to where I live. No parking, they have no provisions for parking. At least before they had the fire, they had a parking lot in that area. Now they park everywhere, including the fire lane. So if this project goes through, it's just going to make things a lot worse. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, Jonathan Winikoff, I'm at 16 Stetson Street.
And after Mr. Winikoff is Shang Zhang Zhang.
So I'm a pediatrician, safety is probably one of my number-one considerations. I work with poor and indigent people. I think, from, as a, from a safety standpoint, I think that the extra traffic that this will create will be a problem for bicycle accidents, for children on scooters. I think exiting and entering a building this size is going to provide a lot of opportunities for injuries. I'm also on the Devotion Site Council, and have three, two kids in Devo, one who's now at the high school. But the Devo school is already 900-plus students. When you add in the other 40B developments, we're going to be at 1,000 or more. Lawrence is already full, using modular classrooms. We've had enough trouble finding a site for a school in this, in this neighborhood. I think we're talking about loss of green space to build a 10th school if we have buildings this size. I think that, in the interim, what we could expect would be very large class size, which would be counter to what we're trying to do with our poor and underserved people in this neighborhood, is to have smaller class sizes, more individualized attention.
Let me just, class effects on the schools is not a valid 40B objection.
Oh, okay, thank you, no, thank you. So I also think it's not fair for any one neighborhood to absorb most of the new buildings for the entire town. It's a large town, we should spread out and make sure that all areas equally can try to, try to have 40B. I think it's not, it doesn't serve any neighborhood to be all one type of person, all very wealthy, all very poor. I think it's important to have integration, and it doesn't serve our community very well to have one area that's just so concentrated. Anyway, public transportation is also an issue, I take the train to work every day. Sometimes there's two trains that go by that I can't get on, and I think having another 300 units right there, right in Coolidge Corner, where it's the, I think it's the busiest stop on the C-line, I think will just pack people in more, and I think people won't be able to get to work. Especially, we don't have an underground train station, we have to wait outside on a cold day. That's certainly an important consideration. I take issue with some of the things in the proposal. The clever design of the building means that it will be almost invisible from the street. I just, I just don't understand that. The comparison buildings are far away from the actual site, and not in the downtown Coolidge Corner area, which is what this is proposed. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, hey, everyone, thank you for giving me the chance.
Hang on, before you start, up after the speaker is Diana Spiegel.
All right, thanks. So I live at 26 John Street, right next to where the proposal, where the proposed construction would happen. I'm a researcher at Howard Medical School in Donna Farber. So one thing I want to comment on is there is no building as high as that in Longwood Medical Area, which I think brings the, brings up the question, is if we do need that scale of a project to really accommodate for both affordable and extra housing. And I think the previous speakers also have outlined many important issues, and I want to only add one thing, which is the environmental concern that large construction could bring into a neighborhood. This includes, but are not limited, things such as ventilation, trash removal, pest control, and all the kind of things that would come along with a large-scale new development. And I think we welcome any new development proposal from Chestnut Hill Realty, but I think we certainly want to move with caution and not, not rush in the decision. Thanks.
Thank you. Diana Spiegel, and then Marty Yaseem.
I'm Diana Spiegel, I'm a town meeting member in Precinct 2, and live a few blocks away from Waldo Street. I support affordable housing, but this 40B proposal is, as everyone has said, dramatically out of scale with the neighborhood, and creates, would create very unsafe traffic conditions, and also conditions for pedestrians, especially with the senior housing one block away at 50 Pleasant Street, and the Coolidge Corner Library, which is the most heavily-used branch library in the state. So I really agree with everything people have been saying so far, but I want to focus on something a little bit different, and that is, what will be lost if this is built, as described. In June of 2002, the Brookline Preservation Commission discussed National Register eligibility for the Durden Garage, and five years later, they voted, after having produced a study and a document, which I'll send you, National Register eligibility for the Durden Garage at 1018 Pleasant Street. I guess it's Waldo Street, actually. And just to summarize that document, the Durden Garage is the most architecturally distinguished public garage built in Brookline. Indeed, most of the surviving public garages in Brookline built prior to 1930 have been significantly altered. In addition to its architectural significance, the Durden Garage is important historically in terms of the role it played in Brookline's attempt to manage the profound changes brought by the automobile. The Durden Garage meets the criteria for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. And then, five years after that, in the fall of 2012, five years ago, Preservation Massachusetts declared the Durden Garage in Brookline as one of Massachusetts' most endangered historic resources. And they've been doing this for over 25 years. Every year, they declare a number of buildings in the state endangered resources. And just to lift a sentence from their report, in 1926, Charles Durden hired Harold Field Kellogg, who had designed Boston's Battery March Building, and also Brookline's Longwood Towers, to design this ornate neoclassical garage. Anyway, I feel like I'm giving a eulogy. Please urge mass housing to deny the pill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Yaseem, and after Mr. Yaseem is Jessica Foster? Okay, and after, how about Michael Foster? Okay, you'll be, you'll be next.
Thank you, Neil. I just want to preface my remarks by saying this, that everybody who is sitting in this room, including the people from Chestnut Hill Realty, know that 40B came about because of the exclusionist policies in the suburbs surrounding Boston to keep people of color and poor people out of the communities. This community is a multicultural community, isn't it? And is filled with people of all nationalities, you and your company.
Let's not get, just talk about the project.
So, fine.
And direct to us.
Okay. So it seems to me that to use 40B as a bludgeon in one of the densest communities in the Boston area, to, to use this as, as a bludgeon over our heads to do what I can only describe as callous self-aggrandizement. You, you, you bought the property.
Okay, let, okay, okay. Keep it, keep it on the Project the Law.
Okay, okay, so, so-
And direct your comments to the board.
I'm sorry. So it does seem to me that everybody's comments have been well-taken. I'll add just a couple of others, that hundreds of kids are coming up and down John Street, all the time. They're passing this John Street parking lot. I think it is tremendously important that this board take this into consideration. I also think that the shadow that such a building would cast over everything around it, depending on the time of the day, that people around us, we have some rights, too. I also think that nobody's talked about wind, and we live in a very windy area. And if you've been down near Hancock Building, and the building's downtown, you know what such tall buildings do with wind. And this could have a tremendous impact on the area just from the wind currents going around this building. So I would just like to suggest to the Board of Selectmen that if Chestnut Hill Realty, if this is a real proposal, and you want to push this forward, Chestnut Hill Realty, that this board of selectmen do everything that you can, and this is a well-to-do town, to fight on every level, going in, in the government, and there's a, there's a housing court, there's a lot of different levels to this, and fight against this, because this project has no place in our community, it should not be in this community, and it would damage our community, and we should not have it here. They ought to come up with something else. They put the money there, they should figure out how not to damage the community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. After Mr. Foster is Sarah Williamson Allen. Mr. Foster.
Thank you, I'm not going to repeat anything that anybody else has said.
Okay.
I will say, I'm only a resident here for about three and a half years. I moved from Wellesley here, and I'm happy to be here. I will say, my observation of Pleasant Street, as it approaches Beacon, is that there's a pinch point at that area, and even with the present configuration, that there's backups, that whole traffic manipulation around Pleasant, and Waldo, and Beacon is an area concern. If that's not a 40B concern, I don't know, but I think it should be taken note of. I also, in listening to the, to the presentation, I noted that the garage has been there for many, many years. There also was a body shop, or is a body shop, presently there, right? Many years ago, I was a pretty good chemical engineer, and I would urge that if it is a 40B consideration, that soil studies be taken below the surface, particularly if there's a garage going in underground, that, that soil studies, there may be some remediation that's required due to the work of, due to just spillings that take place in a garage, certainly within a body shop. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Hang on, and after Ms. Williamson Allen is Marlene Joel Steiner.
Hi.
You're on.
I've never been to one of these things before, so I don't really know how this goes. And the whole process is very confusing, I'm hearing things like alternative projects and things, which I'm hoping is what's going to be happening. Obviously, I'm in competition.
I'm hoping that, too.
So I live at 20 John Street, I don't know if, I'll just go ahead and show you, since this is right here. That's 20 John Street, number three. That's my place, right there. Clearly, I don't want this to go through, 21 stories would just, we wouldn't have any more light, the wind tunnel, I agree with, the traffic congestion. I have two young kids, I have a three-year-old and a six-year-old. It drives me crazy to think of all that traffic right there, you know, they're scooting around, they're biking. I can't stand the looks of it right now, looking at the vacant lot, out my wonderful, like, greenhouse in the back, but that would be better to deal with than to deal with something like that. So I agree with everything else that's been said around the safety, the health issues, the traffic congestion, and just the community feel around the point of affordable housing. I'm a social worker, this is not the point of that. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marlene.
Before you start, af, so we'll hear from Marlene, then Jill. Okay, and then we'll hear from Yu Chi Lee.
Are we ready?
You're on.
Okay. I'm Marlene Steiner, and I live at 24 John Street. And we moved to Brookline in 1977, and-
So you're a newcomer.
Oh, yeah, yeah. At that time, Eddie Zucker owned those units, all of them, John Green condominium. And we rented a three-bedroom apartment from him for $295 at that particular time, so. We've been in Brookline 40 years, we love it. We've never liked the back Waldo, it's, you know, it's pretty ugly. We would love to see something different, however, we would like to see some different kinds of things that I know Ed Zucker can make available to the town, all right? This is just one thing, I feel like he owes Brookline more. Brookline has been very good to Mr. Zucker.
Let's not get personal, talk about the project.
Well, it's not personal, it's more that I know he can do better. It's more that I know he can do better. And I, you know, would appreciate seeing something more from him, and maybe adds something for the community. I mean, this is an area that, you know, everyone loves and enjoys, whether you're, you know, in North Brookline or South Brookline. We all congregate at the movie theater, at the bookstore, and, you know, the wonderful restaurants and schools that we all, you know, take advantage of, and that's why we live here. So, I just, you know, I think something more can be done than, you know, something of this magnitude. So, I'd like to see some other things put forward, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Steiner.
Thank you. I don't have too much else to add, but when Mr. Zucker bought the parking lot that's located at that entrance, it was actually an old dilapidated house, and he bought that to make it into a parking lot in order to provide parking for the people he was trying to sell those beautiful apartments to. And he, he made part of the deal of turning it into a condo that we would forever have parking right there off of John Street. And actually, what you're looking at are really three separate parcels, the Dergan Garage, the 20 John Street location, and the Waldo Garage, which I believe somebody may have pointed out, had been for a long time a body shop in itself.
Still is.
I wasn't sure whether that was that property or the Dergan Garage, which is now a body shop.
Okay, you're right.
So, and I know when they left, there was a lot of work done to remove the gas tanks that were underground in the Waldo area, and I don't know how much remediation they did, but apparently, they did satisfy the town. Whoever took over the property then, I think that was before Mr. Zucker bought the property. And one thing I hate to say, but positive for Ed Zucker, is I noticed when they were building a beautiful set of condos on Minor Street in the Kenmore area, he actually tore down some of the ugly facing and had them put up nicer stuff at his own expense. And, well, I hate to say something good about him, but he does apparently stand behind the quality of his properties. And the other thing is also, since I'm 80 years old and have been retired for a while, I get to see all the kids going down John Street, on the other side of the street, for whatever reason they've chosen that, on their way to the library, and also to the various parks in town for their time in the outside, and that's about it for now.
Okay, thank you. So, next one up is Richard Nguyen, and Mr. Nguyen is the last one who has signed up. So, after Mr. Nguyen, I'll take any and all comers.
Hi, Richard Nguyen, 60 Brown Street, former Town Meeting member. We've been here before with St. Aden's, and we learned a few lessons from that about how to deal with developers. What we saw at St. Aden's initially was an abusive development to the neighborhood, and eventually, a reasonable outcome that provided much-needed affordable housing and a real good addition to the community. And I find it frustrating that developers feel they have to be abusive to begin a dialogue with the community. But I also learned from the St. Aden's development that without the threat of legal action, and in fact, without legal action from the community, we got nothing from them. And the developers here need to understand that there are actually three constituents here. There's them, there's you, the board, and there's the community. And I suspect that we will stand our ground, and we will fight this legally, and we will delay, 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 because the time is ticking. So, please, Board of Selectmen, work as hard as you can with the developers to get a reasonable development that we all want to see on this site. It has to accommodate the fact that there are many children, many bicycles, a lot of pedestrians, a lot of cars at the Pleasant Street end there. Any egress out of that Waldo Street is infeasible. There's a policeman on Beacon Street there on Friday nights directing the traffic. It's so dense. It backs up, there's traffic all the way back down Beacon Street, and, and this was pointed out by Anna Vera, my wife, there's no way we can do a traffic study here until Devotion School is back in operation. So, that provides a time horizon, for the least time horizon, that we could do a decent traffic study. And the community has to be involved in the traffic study. In St. Aden's, it was the developers' traffic study, and we all got, you know, this, it's not, not a big deal. I urge you to involve the community in the traffic study. We know the times that traffic is bad. We know when pedestrians are there. So, that's absolutely essential. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Suzie? So, I guess at this point, anyone who wants to speak, just line up and take first come, first served.
Hello, my name's Susan Roberts. I'm Town Meeting member for Precinct Two, and I am on the Coolidge Corner Study Committee. And I wanted to comment on the 40B project and the presentation that was here today. I must say that after the presentation, the reaction of everyone in the room, including the board, it seemed to me, was very similar to the reaction of the CNN panelists after they saw Donald Trump speak at the CIA. Kind of speechless. But seriously, I think that relates to the proponent's credibility, which also, I think, relates to the Hancock Village MOU as well.
You know what? We really would prefer, if you could talk about the project and not cast aspersions on...
I'm not. I really am not. I'm speaking for myself, and I'm speaking for members of my precinct, and that's why I'm here. But I am, it is curious to me about how the company has entered into what seems to be a very, you know, well-thought-out memorandum of understanding for which Town Meeting is going to be voting in the spring on a project that makes a lot of sense, and then to expect that the town is also going to entertain, and entertain well and generously a project that is like this, which I have to agree that, one, in our neighborhood, because I do live around the corner on Green Street, feels kind of like a bludgeoning and, you know, using 40B in a way that is abusive. I think that word is important, and I appreciate that it was used. And because of that, and the reason I say that, of course, is because I have, and people in my precinct have told me that they too have serious concerns about all the things that we've been talking about, the huge ridiculous mass scale of this project, the traffic, again, is ridiculous, and I agree with, with Richard Nguyen about doing a traffic study when Devotion School is back in operation. In terms of the shadow, that is very, very key. Mr. Steiner just mentioned that he didn't realize, he didn't know why students, children walk on the other side of the street of John. It's because that's where the sun is. There's no, and I know this because of my dog, that's where the sun is, because she doesn't like the ice, and that's what happens, and this building, of course, is going to end sunlight for the entire block or more. The wind, the parking, quite honestly, as I said last night in the Study Committee, it seems like this is, you know, Mount Rainier watching over our town, and it's just way too big. All of that said, I'm really looking forward to participating on the Study Committee and having a really great project in this neighborhood. This neighborhood, these older buildings, really deserve a great project, and I feel like the submission that we have received, where the proponent talks about how the project fits within the area environment, where Coolidge Corner is ideal and perfect for a signature building, those words ring so hollow when one considers the project that has been proposed.
Please conclude.
So, in conclusion, and I, oh, I do want to also say that I support what both Selectmen Heller and Selectmen Green said with respect to the integration of everyone in our community and not the luxury top one percenters as well.
Please conclude.
So, in conclusion, I would ask that the board deny this, I would ask that the board write to Mass Development that the proposal be denied, that the eligibility letter not be issued, and that if there's any one project in Brookline that would be best suited for a denial, this one is that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bernard.
Hello. Two nights in a row. I'm Lauren Bernard, I'm a precinct, I'm a Town Meeting member in Precinct Eight, where this project squarely is proposed. I wear actually a lot of hats. I am sitting, I'm pleased to say that I'm sitting on the Study Committee as well for Coolidge Corner. And I happen to be in a butter. The building you are, we are looking at now, where my neighbor Sarah Williamson, she's on the top floor, I'm on the first floor. So, I look at that, and I think, not only am I going to have to look at that thing in back, but I'm going to have to deal with the traffic going down, you know, the side. I guess what I want to ask, and I know our questions are supposed to be directed toward you, but I would ask in turn that you direct them toward Chestnut Hill Realty. On one of the slides, I'm afraid to fiddle with this thing, but on one of the slides, it was written that it will, quote, "improve the streetscape." I'd like to know, how would this improve the streetscape? I fail to see where and how and what way this would improve the streetscape. So, I'm a little bit lost, but I would like perhaps to have an answer to that question. And I also would like to know, in terms of the green space that's proposed, in what way would the public be able to access this green space? It looks like, there's kind of like this baseball diamond thing back there, and then there's this circle, you know, it looks like a rotary, with a little plot of grass there. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that the developer is, is thinking about green space, and I will say this, Chestnut Hill Realty met with our condominium association, of which I'm a trustee in addition to everything else, and this summer, and said that the setback was precisely so that we would not lose light. I don't see how we can not lose light with the scope enassing of this particular project proposal, but I will, I want to tell the board that was a concern, and we appreciated that. But I fail to see how this green space is accessible, and in what way are there, any of these public benefits accessible? So, I would ask that the board ask those questions. And I would like to reiterate what Suzie said, is a project of this scale, you know, I emphatically, represent emphatic sentiment in my precinct, and my constituents, and the board should write to Mass Development to not issue an eligibility letter for something of this scale. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Kirsten Britier. I live at 29 Green Street, so I'm in a butter to the project. I'm also a former member of the Preservation Commission, and I have a master's degree in Historic Preservation, and I just wanted to speak about the project from the preservation planning point of view. I really appreciate that they are planning to incorporate the facade of the Dergan Garage, which, as someone mentioned before, is extremely historic and important to the fabric of the neighborhood. But to have a 10-story building as the main mass, topped by another 11 stories, even just that 10-story building with a roof deck and pool is higher than the Pellam Building right next door. Although the entrance to the building is not on Beacon Street because of that turnaround area, for all intents and purposes, this is a Beacon Street facade, and Beacon Street is a national historic landmark. Coolidge Corner, the retail shops are one and two stories high. In order to put a signature building, we have some signature buildings in Coolidge Corner, we have the Pierce Building, the movie theater, they're not 21 stories high, and they hold their own very well. And so, I would just encourage the developer to really think about this neighborhood. Yes, there are some taller skyscrapers further up Beacon Street away from Boston, but in this area, the vernacular is really one- and two-story retail, and then at the most, an eight- or nine-story single apartment building one off. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Carrie Staff. I live on Stedman Street. There are a few things that I wanted to say that I appreciate in this proposed 40B proposal that I haven't seen in some other ones around town, one of which is that the affordable units are at 50% of the median income, which most of them are 80, so that's much more closer to something that's truly affordable. Also, the higher parking ratio here, certainly 333 parking spaces is way too many for Coolidge Corner, and I would again add, the entrance there at Waldo Street is a real problem, and the traffic around that would have to be addressed. But I'm glad to see that there's a more realistic look at the parking ratios, because even people who take the T to and from work, or walk or bike, they still often have cars that they use on the weekend and are going to need a place to park them. And in addition, the attempt, at least, to include some open space, although it would be preferable if that were more usable open space rather than a roundabout in the middle of a rotary. Some of the concerns for the project, I wasn't aware that they were planning to maintain the facade, and that was going to be one of my suggestions, is real opportunity here to maintain, at least, the very least, that historic facade, which is a real unique, the large windows could be reused, and could really be a very unique continued use there. I'm concerned about the shadows and the distance of which the shadows would cast. And then, another concern that I had was that, in the application, it says that the units are not affordable in perpetuity. I believe it was 30 years, and I thought that most of the other 40Bs are in perpetuity. So, that would be a real shame if we build this building, which has so many luxury units, and the affordable ones only remain for 30 years. That's it.
Yeah.
Just to clarify that point on perpetuity, I don't know what the application says on that point, but we fully anticipate that the units will be restricted as affordable in perpetuity.
Thank you. Actually, there's a letter to, I, there's a letter to Mass Development, it looks like it's boilerplate, that says, "The Affordable Covenant will be the longer of terms specified in the comp permit, 30 years or the minimum required by the bond."
Right, the Mass Development bond financing would be a 30-year term, and they would impose a 30-year affordability restriction as part of their regulatory agreement, but presumably, the town in its comprehensive permit will impose a perpetual...
Right. All of the 40Bs, the recent 40Bs have had perpetual affordability.
Good evening. My name is Magna Chakrabarti, and I live at 27 James Street, just a block away from the proposed development. I just want to briefly reiterate some of the things that we've heard tonight, and then add one more thought. I have a first grader at Lawrence School, and we walk to school every morning, and already, crossing Beacon Street is like taking our lives into our own hands, because traffic in the morning, and of course, in the evening, is, makes Beacon Street virtually unpassable for pedestrians. That is how it is already, because cars are so backed up at the Pleasant Street and St. Paul Streets intersection, well, a little less at St. Paul, but definitely at Pleasant Street, that the cars are over the crosswalks at almost all times, in the morning and evening rush hour. A point was made, and that problem will only get exacerbated by 300-plus more cars living right there on the corner. It was also pointed out about the Green Line. The developer tonight has rightfully observed that proximity to public transit is a major draw for a development like this. The Green Line is already overwhelmed. It is, multiplicity of cars go by every morning and every evening, and it is impossible to get on. We need virtually a Japanese-style pusher to get people... We need virtually a Japanese-style pusher to get people on the Green Line, and the MBTA is financially incapable of increasing service on the Green Line, nor does it have any plans to do so. So, we need to take that into account, that the very thing that makes this development potentially a draw for people potentially spending a lot of money to live there, it will be difficult for them to use the MBTA. I'd also like to just point out briefly Pleasant Street a little bit more. We've been told rightly that the Coolidge Corner branch library is there, incredibly popular. We go there every single day. It's accessed by pedestrians, by bicyclists, and by cars. I am concerned that the increased traffic demands around Waldo and Beacon Street will overflow onto Pleasant Street, and Pleasant connects Beacon Street to Commonwealth Avenue at its far end. It is already at times used as virtually a drag strip for people trying to get from one end of Pleasant to the other. I have kids, we try to cross the street, I have to tell my six-year-old, please be careful and be sure there's nobody on the road, because we have been virtually hit several times. And just the volume, the volumetric fact of three hundred more cars makes that quite a danger for families living there. We've discussed environmental concerns, et cetera. One quick question, these comments are forwarded to the state, is that correct?
And we should tell anyone who wants to send in a letter, we will attach it to our letter to the state. So, you should do that.
So, with that in mind, my final comment has to do with the intent of 40B. As a person of color and a person who was only able to buy in Brookline because of an incredible gift from members of my family, that's what made it possible for us to buy in this town, I do believe the state should take close care and consideration in its thoughts about approving projects that undermine the entire purpose of the 40B law. We have here tonight, I think, I think very publicly, you know, I appreciate the transparency and the presentation given by the developers, but it's on public record tonight that they admit this is not middle-class housing, it is luxury housing. And we all know what market forces are. The fact is, is that the addition of units that cost thousands and now in the tenths of thousands of dollars range will only increase the cost of living for rental and housing for everybody in the neighborhood, and that in and of itself undermines the entire purpose of creating affordable housing in towns that need it, like the town of Brookline. So, the state should do everything that it can to increase the amount of affordable housing all over Massachusetts. We have a housing crisis. Full disclosure, I talk about it on my show all the time. But the truth is, is that the crisis will be exacerbated if we have luxury developments that are approved in 40B clothing. Thank you very much.
I do feel like I have to believe everything she says since I often listen to her program.
Elizabeth Shaw, 1264 Beacon Street. I'm going to say everything that went beforehand, so.
Thank you.
Everything that went beforehand. I do want to, I do want to stress the fact that the project as it's presented today would create hardship for the people living in the immediate vicinity. Me, I'm on Beacon Street, everybody on Pleasant, John, Green Street, in terms of the volume. And it's not clear to me that the benefits of this project are worth the impact. As Magna said, it's not really going to make, it may exacerbate the affordable housing situation. And I know people, I know friends who are being priced out of Brookline, and this is not going to help them. So, anyway, with that, I'll just conclude with everything everybody else said before me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Jane Piercy. I live on Still Street, I'm also Town Meeting, Precinct Two. And the one thing that I wanted to really add to the comments about the wind, the reason wind matters is that lots of the people that live in Coolidge Corner, myself included, live there because it's walkable. I don't drive down Pleasant Street like ever. I walk down Pleasant Street. We already joke in my house that in the winter, we call it Unpleasant Street, right by the Waldo Garage, because it is so windy. And if another building goes up, that is going to decrease the walkability, both the traffic is going to decrease walkability and the wind. And that is why many of us in that neighborhood live there, because we don't want to drive and we don't want lots of cars. So, I'm concerned with the impact on walkability.
Thank you.
I'm a fellow wind, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two, living in Brown Street. As I mentioned in my letter to you, I'd like to just emphasize the fact that the last traffic study that was done on Pleasant Street was done during the summer. No previous study of traffic on Pleasant Street should be taken into account to, you know, to, when you look into this project. I saw people counting cars, I was there, and I was shocked that that was for the St. Adens, for the St. Adens project. And again, as a neighbor, I walk past Pleasant Street every day. That is a busy street. It has handicapped people walking, it has elderly people walking, it has children walking to the library. That's what we want to emphasize, that's what we want to create, that's what we want to maintain in our neighborhood. So, I urge you, and as a community, we will fight. We fought St. Adens and we got a reasonable project. This is at least, it should be at least, I don't know, half its size, a quarter of its size. This is too large for our neighborhood, and we were not going to accept it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi. I'm Harriet Rosenstein, Precinct Nine. I didn't intend to speak when I came. I do not, the reason that I came, this is in its way relevant, I came because there would be a discussion of sanctuary cities. I urge indeed that that is what we need to remain. I want to say.
We already did that.
I mean, to remain and remain and remain. What I feel however in all of this is that Brookline itself needs sanctuary, that we are so deeply under attack by, you should excuse me, greedy developers, I'm tired of the language, that we have no sanctuary. And we, as a town, really need to devise methods by which to keep ourselves safe, because otherwise we are going underwater. That's all that I have to say.
Yeah, I'll start with some of the points. I mean, the massing is just crazy. Even the other buildings cited by the developer were one-third smaller than this one. So, obviously, and I think we've talked about this at some length with the project on the other side of Beacon Street, the proposed project, that being kind of at the crest of the hill there, the height issues are exacerbated. I think people are quite right to worry about the wind and the shadow effects that it would have in that area. But I think also, many people brought up this, the points of, there are a lot of people living in this neighborhood, walking in this neighborhood, including in our Housing Authority Building that people mentioned, handicapped and senior citizens. And I, you know, I don't think, I think the sheer traffic from three hundred extra parking spaces there and this giant building would have a huge negative impact on everyone else trying to live in the neighborhood, and that's, that's not fair. I think Bernard's point, and which was reiterated by many people, is that the rents are so high on most of these units, I mean, the $2,500 thing was a studio.
Kind of.
Yeah. So, that wasn't, this, this will have the effect of pushing other rents up in the area and reducing affordability for the middle class. It is contrary to, I think, the intent and the spirit of 40B. And the few affordable units they're providing do not balance out for the negative effects it might have on all those other properties. I think also the, several people mentioned the congestion on the T, and the, if, it's already very difficult at rush hour to get on those T-trains, the, I think it is correct to say that the MBTA, either due to the length of the platforms or their own financial problems, is not going to alleviate that in the near future. So, saying, well, it's okay to put buildings with huge numbers of people here because there's a T nearby, when you can't actually get on the T, this isn't, this is the Green Line, it's not the Red Line. So, I think that is another problem. Just the traffic impacts also on Beacon Street, which are also very difficult. This is a, you know, we're not, we are not downtown Boston, and this is a building that would be large even in downtown Boston. And so, those are my thoughts. I mean, I agree with someone who said we should actually ask for them to just deny this project.
Yes.
I agree with that.
So, I think, you know, let me go through my summary, and then if I miss anything, or you want to add, or you want to tell me I'm wrong, be my guest. I think the letter should be strong in the same way we did the 1299 letter, and I would go that step further about this project as proposed, I think is a non-starter, and I hope Mass Development would agree. Certainly, the scale and the massing, we should comment that this would be by far the tallest building in Brookline, and that the tall buildings used as a reference in the application are really not immediately adjacent or near or create the streetscape of this immediate area. And, you know, more, to me, more, Pelham Hall is kind of the massing anchor, and kind of sets the example of the scale in the neighborhood. But I also think the letter should say that the community, and I think the town recognizes that the site itself, in its current use, is less than desirable, and that we would like something to happen on this site, it's just not what you see here. So, you know, redevelopment of this site is appropriate. The traffic needs to be fully studied, and some of the points brought up was the so-called pinch point at Pleasant and Beacon with that, the turnoff. Waldo as an entrance or exit really needs to be studied, and then through traffic onto John. And I know we were starting to talk about that a little in the study committee, and that's going to be an area of focus.
Neil, excuse me while we're on that topic, just recall that devotion is not now being used.
Right.
And so, there's a lot less traffic, and it would be grossly unfair to have a traffic study until devotion is up and running again.
We should, we should comment on the proximity to the library and the traffic, the traffic, not only cars but also pedestrians, and also the nature of the traffic heading to the library, it tends to be a lot of kids. We should comment, as we have in some of our other letters, about the proximity of a whole bunch of 40Bs in the one neighborhood, and ask Mass Development, as we have with some of our more recent letters, to do what DHCD asked, that Mass Development coordinate with some of the other subsidizing agencies, and that was a prescription that DHCD, which kind of supervises the whole construct, has asked, so we should make sure that Mass Development knows about that. One comment that kind of hit me, I'm just going down my notes here, is that there's no building this high even in the Longwood Medical Area, but if we're going to say that, we should confirm that.
High.
Okay. But we should, if we're going to, any, any facts that we throw in there, we should make sure they are confirmed, so the letter has credibility. We should note the, some of the preservation concerns stated to us, we should note the streetscape issues, the shadow impacts, of course. And then, this building is, as proposed, is so large that we really need to consider the wind impacts, which is not something we've, we've put into any of our other letters, because none of our other projects were so large as to potentially create wind tunnels. Having worked for many years in government center and having had to walk across City Hall Plaza, I know the, the impact that a windy environment has, so it's definitely a concern. We're concerned about how out of character this proposal is, and how it will impact the feel of the community. There's nothing else like it, around it. The, there seems to be few community benefits in this proposal as stated. We should, we should comment on the traffic, if I, this was said, I'll just say it again, that we need to take into account the fact that the school is not, is not in its permanent location at this point. Any traffic study needs to be done during school, during the school year. A comment that was made that kind of hit me was, the developers stated their intention that this be a signature building. There are other signature buildings, such as the Pierce Building and the cinema, that just aren't, just don't dominate the landscape like this one's. So, you don't need to be so big to be a signature building.
How about the expansion on the T, the impact of the neighborhood?
So, Bernard, did I?
Yeah. I just want to add one thing. It's not relevant to the consideration that mass housing will.
Mass development.
I'm sorry, mass development. Not relevant to mass development considerations with respect to this Pell letter, but I think it is important for people who are concerned about the impact that these high rents will have on both rents within Brookline as well as housing prices, let their legislators know your concerns and the specific details and concrete examples that you can provide regarding those concerns, because many times legislators think of 40B from the standpoint of, you know, the time when it was originally enacted, and don't think about how it may be affecting specific communities like Brookline. They think of, you know, 40B as we're going after those communities who have snob zoning to keep out low-income and minority families. I mean, the world has changed since then, and we need to let our legislators know that, and hopefully get them to make whatever adjustments are necessary so that 40B is not used in such a way as to basically make communities unaffordable as a whole, even though there may be a few affordable. as a whole, even though there may be a few affordable, affordable housing units within that unaffordable ocean.
Okay.
Technical question?
Sure, technical question, quickly. Come to the mic.
Why, why is it that buildings, I mean, this might sound simplistic, are measured in stories when that doesn't really mean anything? I mean, does anyone ever, is it, is it, within Mass Development's analysis matrix or whatever, the actual number of feet or yards?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Because it seems to me stories is kind of a misnomer.
Um, in the, in the application, it is expressed in feet, it's expressed in stories, I don't know. I, I've been saying stories because it, I understand stories. I don't know what 160 feet means, but I know what 21 stories means, or I have a picture of it. That's me.
Just because, like, you might have a, a tw- an 18-story building, like, as Chen Zhang was saying in the Longwood Medical Center, I mean, I'd be curious to know, I think I know the building's talking about, how is, how many feet is that, and how is that compared to this?
Yeah, I don't, we can check that.
I'm just-
Yeah, but that's a, that's a good point. So, uh, what's going to come out, come out of this is a letter to Mass Development, we'll be discussing that next week, but we won't be taking public comment. But I'll also note again, as I started, started, started this out, that there's going to be a parallel process where we're going to be looking at a alternative proposal, hopefully much smaller, and not as impactful, and with much more community benefits, um, through this alternative project. And I think, um, you know, I'm, I'm coming away with the impression that folks in, in the neighborhood are not averse to development of this property, you know, as, as it is, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty rundown. We just want the right development with the right scale that adds something to the neighbor- neighborhood, and I think that's what we're going to try to achieve. And whatever comes out of that process is going to have to go to town meeting because it's going to require a zoning change. So I would urge you all to pay attention to that process. You can sign up for notifications of, of meetings. The next meeting of that committee is February 13th at, I believe, 7:00 PM. And then, I believe, the timetable is to have, at the beginning of March, a more detailed presentation of what that alternative proposal is going to be. The developer's still working on it, so we haven't seen what that proposal, what, what the initial proposal is going to be yet in, in, in reality. But we're, we're looking at a combination of hotel and housing, that's, that's the starting point.
Letters should be sent through.
Uh, Allison?
If I may, Allison Steinfeld, Planning Director. For those of you who aren't familiar with the 40B process, the Planning Department provides support to the Board of Selectmen during the Pell process and the ZBA during the comprehensive permit process. Are any letters that you submit from now until a week from Thursday will be included in the Selectman's Letter to the State, and obviously the Selectmen will receive copies as well. I'd appreciate it if you'd send those letters to the Planning Department in care of Kay Martin at BrooklineMA.gov. If you forget, just send it to the Planning Department. Also, the Planning Department has a website, we will have a specific file on this project, so pl- clearly always follow that website, and also give Kay Martin, Karen Martin, your names, if you're interested in being on our email list, and we'll shoot you out messages as well. So, thank you.
Selectmen Franco?
So I think that the letter is in good shape. I just want to raise two things that we haven't talked at all about tonight, and one, I want to emphasize a point that came up earlier, that I think mass housing, or mass development, excuse me, needs to take into consideration. I want to reinforce the point about environmental impact, the fact that there was the-
Soil analysis.
Exactly. So I think we need to see some evidence from, in, in LSP. And then two, the two things that we haven't talked about at all is, I think Mass Development needs to think a little bit about the proposed loading and delivery scheme, we've talked about parking and traffic, but we haven't taken into account the, the service of the businesses and the residents. And then also needs to consider trash pickup, refuse pickup. So those belong in the letter as well.
Selectmen Green?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question of, of Allison, and that is, you know, how does the subsidizing agency view these letters we're attaching to our, to our comments? And my question relates to, are we diluting the impact of letters by, you know, just sending them tons and tons of letters? Or should people get together and, and cooperate on focused letters that really will be read and have an impact, whereas many, many letters from many, many people may not? That's the question.
Well, obviously, I can't speak for Mass Development, I certainly, or any subsidizing agency, I certainly hope that they read them. We do know that Mass Housing read your letter on 1299 Beacon, and required the developer to make some changes.
Yeah, that's our letter, I'm, I'm talking about the letters that are attached.
I can't, I don't know if they read them, I hope so, but my sense is, um, they get a thick packet, hopefully they'll read them.
Okay. Having worked in state government and received many letters, I would just suggest that people be strategic in terms of their letter writing, and maybe get together and, and do a few letters that are focused, as opposed to many letters that just dilute the message. That's my opinion.
I don't know, sometimes lots of letters, um, has an impact too.
We can, we, we can argue both strategies.
Yeah.
Think about it.
Anything else, Selectmen Heller?
Yeah, I, I do think that we need to really stress, um, safety, safety, safety here, because this is already a congested area, we know that. We're adding 333 cars, it's a huge number. And with, with, and again, we're not seeing, I don't think, the kind of pedestrian traffic that we will see once devotion reopens. Not only car traffic, but pedestrian traffic. So I'm concerned about safety, I think that the eight people exiting from Waldo Street onto Pleasant, that's going to be a nightmare. People exiting onto John Street, John Street is, and, and the shadow impacts I'm also concerned about. One person mentioned that, you know, the people walk, the kids and the dogs like to walk on the other side of the street because it's warmer, it's, there's sunlight there, and if there won't be any sunlight, this building casts shadows at certain times of the day. So I think that is, that should be, that's going to affect everybody's quality of life. And it's really not fair. The other thing I think you absolutely should stress is the nature of this building. It's really not an affordable housing building, it's a building for luxury housing. Huge rents, people have to have huge incomes to support this kind of rent. It, you know, people have, have mentioned this before about what it does to other rents in Brookline, what it does to, um, the multicultural and racial makeup of our community, but it's, I, I really think that that has to be stressed. This can't be their mission, is to fund and, and provide funds to, to luxury housing. I just don't believe that is their mission.
Okay, well, I think we're, we're kind of done. So-
Can I just clarify? I know that Selectmen Bailey asked that.
So let me, let me just thank everybody.
Thank you.
We have one more piece of business, so if you can exit quickly, so we can finish up.
It was confusing to me whether or not the plan that was going to be exact was going to ask or deny the letter.
Yeah. Now my wife is sitting.
I always had a fairy tale, that you couldn't get rid of whatever, the measles, whatever you had, so you made it, and there was somebody else.
No, no.
Definitely not.
Well, this is our tent.
Yeah, yeah, I can't really imagine what must be going on.
Why don't you, why don't you write that in the letter? As a pediatrician, you should be able to do it.
Okay, um, we have one more piece of business, and this is the FYE 2018 Budget Objectives. Mr. Faison?
Good evening, Assistant Town Administrator Austin Faison.
They're not really the budget objectives.
The Selectmen's objectives.
What, I'm not talking about another 40B? Um, okay. So, that fell super flat.
Yeah.
So-
It's late.
I'll try, I'll get you next time. So, based off the comments from last week, I have updated the objectives for the fiscal 18 financial plan. Chairman Waschinsky gave me two additional updates, one to item number 22, delineating the department, which is planning, and number 24 concerning the hubway language, about the expansion of the hubway program. In the first bullet, Selectmen Green noted that it was a resolution as adopted by town meeting, or the recommendations as adopted by town meeting. And then, if there aren't any other additions, Selectmen Green presented one concerning sanctuary cities that I didn't include to begin with because of the discussion tonight, so I wasn't sure, based off the discussion tonight and kind of the continued discussions, how, if there is an objective concerning sanctuary cities, how you'd want it to read out. The one that Selectmen Green had presented reads, "To develop a clear and effective plan and policies and procedures to provide assistance in safe haven and sanctuary to immigrant and refugee communities in Brookline. That includes the Police Department and other departments of town government and community groups, including houses of worship, service organizations, political entities, nonprofit organizations, educational institutions, and citizens of Brookline."
We, we, we're doing that now.
Look, this is to be an objective.
But for next year.
Okay.
To continue.
I think, I think you have to keep working on that, as the issues come up.
I'm easy.
But, but let me just say-
I mean, you know, if we don't put it in, people will ask about it.
I'm just thinking about, Austin, your joke on 40Bs, and I see that, is, is the only thing in here on 40Bs to continue to provide staff support to the zoning board of appeals?
Uh, that was the only one that I included from the-
Because I think we should say, to, um-
To, to, uh, something about meeting the 10%.
Well, or something about to, to try and temper the negative effects that some 40B proposals would have on the neighborhoods. Something like that.
I think that our goal should be to get to the 10%, maximize, maximize our affordable housing while getting to the 10% or something like that.
Well, you know, no, I'm, I'm not going to say that one, because we could approve this project, and then all those units count, even though-
Well, guys, we, 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 we-
There's somewhat, we don't want to do-
We approved a housing production plan.
Right.
So why don't we focus on that?
Ah, so why don't we, uh, talk about, implement the-
Housing production.
The goals of the housing production plan-
Yeah.
-as a guide to meeting our affordable housing obligations, something like that.
Right. Because we don't want to support bad projects just to get to the 10%.
Yeah, that, yeah, definitely.
I would also like to make one other comment about the renewal, about the energy issues and environment. Under number 16, the first bullet, it says to, it says to explore solar energy generation opportunities. I'd like to, I'd prefer if it said to explore solar and other renewable energy generation opportunities, because-
And it should, should say town properties, not buildings, because I, aren't we proposing-
Right.
Putting the solar panels over some parking lots?
Uh, as of right now, no, that, that's-
Safe properties.
That does, uh-
Safe properties.
Well, we are at the dump, which is, you know, the-
The dump, yeah, the transfer station.
And, and I, I don't want to rule out putting other forms of renewable energy, you know, as, especially as they're developed and the prices come down, we have to continue to look at that, and it may be that we are able to do some other, you know, for instance, at the, at the ninth school where we're building, you know, we're going to build a school from, from the bottom, there may be some other opportunities. I mean, we do have the net zero concept in there, which is good, but I think it's important to, to recognize that there are other, there may be other ways of, hey, we might want to put a wind tower on a building. I mean, if we have a wind tunnel in Coolidge Corner, we might want to capture all that wind. Only joking, but anyway.
Don't go there.
It's late, it's-
I'll change solar to renewable, and change buildings to properties.
I, I don't mind the word solar, but I just say solar and other renewable.
Selectmen Green?
Yeah, let me suggest also, item 31, it's probably not a good idea to mention specific types of emergencies, but rather general emergencies that we want the police and fire and town bridge management-
That's actually a direct goal of one of the departments.
Oh, really?
Most of these are goals from departments that have been consolidated into goals for-
Says, uh, emergencies including, and they list a few.
Yeah, but when you say avian flu and Ebola cases, I mean, that's so specific, and bioterrorists is so specific that I don't care.
Well, you care if there's bioterrorists.
Those are last years.
Okay, are we done?
I think so.
I think it's bedtime.
Is, uh, is there any chance that I can get a vote on these as amended?
Oh, you want a vote?
I would prefer, we, two weeks from tonight, we'll be presenting the budget to you, so it needs to get printed.
So, uh-
As amended.
I'll move that we approve the objectives as amended. See? All those are favor, Selectmen, uh-
Dale, aye.
Selectmen Franco?
Aye.
Selectmen Heller?
Aye.
Selectmen Green?
Aye.
Chair of Vote, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Getting punchy, too late.
I'm a big fan of yours.